Okay, folks, we're gonna-
Sorry. Just taking care of business when we can.
Okay, AGP, I'm looking over for the queue. If you're ready, ready to go? Okay, welcome, everyone. Here we go, looking for the queue. Looks like we're ready to go, good. All right, thanks, AGP. Welcome, everyone, to our special meeting. This is a special meeting. Today is Monday, May 18th. It's 5:30, and we're at the Morro Bay Community Center. We're located at 1001 Kennedy Way. For the record, we do have all members present from council, and we call the meeting to order. And we will be going through some opening remarks from council. We'll go into public comment, and then following public comment, we'll go into our interviews. And on the agenda, the way we have it posted and the way I think it will flow is, we'll have our Rec and Park Commission interviews first, our Citizens Oversight Committee and Finance Committee second, and then our Tourism Business Improvement District interviews third, and then we'll go on to, and combined with that, we also have the TMD, so that'll be fourth, and then finally, our General Plan Local Coastal Plan, our GPAC Committee, will be the last one. We do, we are kind of constrained in this building for space, so as you see, we don't quite have enough seats when we get to the GPAC interviews, but we do have a mic, so maybe we can get some of the seats behind, so we'll be kind of cozy. We'll have some people at the table here, and then maybe some people in chairs behind for the GPAC, and we'll have a cordless or wireless mic, and we could just pass that back and forth, so bear with us on the facilities here, but everything's good. I just wanted to open up with some remarks, and then I'll pass it on to our council members for their opening remarks. And then finally, past opening remarks, we do have some housekeeping items and topics to discuss prior to going into the meeting, and we'll probably go through that before public comment, in case there was any remarks to that. And I have a list of things probably we need to go over, and one is just some technical things. How many do we want to have on our GPAC? So we'll have council the opportunity to discuss basically a number. And then we have, the other one we need to make clarification on, there's one thing in our bylaws about standing committee members cannot be on more than two boards, and I'll open that up for discussion to get clarity, and Dana will be available if there's any help on that as well. And then we have a topic of non-residence, so we have a couple applicants that are non-residents, and we'll cover that topic as well. And then finally, we also have applicants that are not in attendance. So those four topics we'll cover amongst the council, and then we'll open up for public comment, and then finally, public comment, we'll come back and start off with the interviews. So here we go. I'd just like to start off by welcoming and thank everybody for their interest in serving on one of the city's advisory boards. By serving on one of Morro Bay's advisory boards, you can help plan and guide the city's future. It is important that members of the advisory boards understand the functions and responsibilities that members of advisory boards provide for council. We hope that you find serving on the city's advisory boards personally satisfying, and the process, you gain invaluable knowledge and experience. The City of Morro Bay Municipal Code empowers the city council to form boards and commissions to assist the city council in legislating and managing the affairs of the city. From time to time, citizens advisory committees are appointed to meet specific topic and need. Their varied roles provide significant opportunities for formulating city policy and for creating public forums for meaningful community participation. Consistent with the city's mission statement, advisory boards can help the city achieve its mission and purpose, which is to preserve and enhance the citizens of Morro Bay's quality of life. These advisory bodies assist the council in making better informed decisions by formulating new ideas, information gathering, receiving public testimony and comments, analyzing complex issues, and making recommendations on specific projects and broad policy. Advisory boards advise city council and city manager on matters within their responsibility and interest, help focus attention on specific issues and problems with their scope of responsibilities, and recommend action and alternatives for council consideration, access channels of communication among city government and the general public and interest groups, and balance community wants with municipal responsibility and resources. At times, your role may be challenging and complex. Public opinion can be sharply divided. Questions may overlap, and sometimes the province of one body may also be the territory of another. Therefore, an advisory handbook was created to assist you in some of the fundamental aspects of your new responsibility. I'd like to thank you for applying for these important advisory board positions, though some of you may not get selected. It's not that we don't value you, it's just that we have limited spaces, and we would encourage you all to apply for any positions in the future. And with that, I'll turn it over to my fellow council members for their opening remarks, and I'll start with Christine on my left.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. And just to echo what the mayor went through, I wish we could appoint you all, but we can't because we only have so many openings, and many of you also expressed the desire to work on a board that's not too large or overwhelming, so we're keeping that in mind, especially with our GPAC. But every time we go through this, there are inevitably people that don't get appointed, and thank you for those who have returned, maybe a second time, weren't appointed, maybe a first go around and have come back. So I think I appreciate that very much, and it speaks a lot to you as an individual and your individual commitment to the City of Morro Bay. So looking forward to getting through this and having a little bit of fun. Thanks very much.
Matt?
Okay, well, hi, everybody. Thanks for coming out. It was really interesting. I got my start in the city government on PWEB, so I really appreciate it, and I understand what you're going through, and thank you for coming out.
Great. John?
Good evening. Let me echo my thanks to you for being so interested that you want to actually spend time, more time, than just watching council meetings and other meetings, and actually participate actively in government. This city, more than any other city that I have been associated with, has significant public involvement, and I think that is outstanding. We have a significant number of people that have expertise that is well beyond my expertise in many areas, and I am greatly appreciative of the advisory bodies and the fact that you're here tonight and bringing that expertise to us, and hopefully, others in the future will continue to do that. So thanks for coming out, and we appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Noah.
Yeah, I'll echo all the things that have been said and not really add much more, but just note that in many of our bigger decisions, we do ask for advice and suggestions from our advisory boards, and in almost every case, I think we've adopted that advice completely. So your role is very important, and again, please do come back out if you don't make it. It's really important to see fresh faces, and there's a number of them tonight. Part of the challenge with the Finance Committee was there were suggestions that we wouldn't see enough people interested in that position, and it's really great to see new, very qualified people stepping up to the plate and helping us go on into the future. So thank you all for being here.
Thanks, everyone. And now, we'll go over a couple of the list of items that I discussed at the beginning, and because we have a variety of advisory board openings, we also opened up some openings to the GPAC. It was just basically, hey, anybody that's interested, GPAC being the General Plan Advisory Committee, as we get into these acronyms. So it's, you know, it's asked other advisory board members to apply as well. So in going through all the processes or policies and procedures and things like that, a couple of things were noted, so for housekeeping purposes, just want to discuss those briefly with council so we understand what's going on. And the first one of were was standing committee members that cannot be on two boards. As an example, we have some planning commissioners and other that might be applying for a General Plan Advisory Committee. That doesn't preclude those folks from doing that. Two boards specifically to a planning commission, and let's say a park advisory, park and rec advisory board. Anything that has to do with a special purpose committee, such as the General Plan Advisory Committee, wouldn't be included that. However, we do have one new committee that we were forming, and that is our Finance Committee that is in conjunction with our Citizen Oversight Committee. And just for clarification, sorry to put you on the spot, Marlis, but we have one of our advisory board members that applied for that as well, and I think it's just prudent for the board to discuss that and just, you know, get it out on the table. So going through that policy, it basically says, "As general policy, applicant shall not be appointed to serve on more than one advisory board." And just checked with our city attorney on some of the procedures for that, and just doing our due diligence, and he says, you know, his advice was, "As a general policy, we can make exceptions as a body to that," because, as he noted, it was a general policy. And in addition, we were looking for four specific people for that advisory board opening. We have four applicants and four well-qualified applicants, in addition to, you know, not being a type of advisory board that's meeting on a monthly basis, it's more of a quarterly or biannual basis. So I'll open up that discussion with council as far as any more clarification or discussion on that topic, and just ask me if I was clear enough on that explanation. So I'll look to my right, Noah, if you want to start us off on any of that.
Sure, and thanks for getting, doing this legwork and bringing this information forward because this is new information, and there's a couple of things that I think about, looking at the idea of making an exception to our policies and procedures, I think is something we should avoid when possible. And in this case, there's some things that I'm thinking about with the Citizens Oversight Committee and the Finance Committee. We are coming up right here on our budget sessions, and it is important, in my opinion, to have a full Measure Q Committee, as well as get this committee up and running as soon as possible. So I think, I think there are some, if there were more candidates available, I would think to go ahead and uphold that and not have the exception implemented. In this case, I'm kind of on the fence. I think it might be wise to ask Marlis to consider one or the other, although I'm really preferring that we do fill the Finance Committee completely, just because of the importance there. So I'd be willing to make an exception in this case, knowing that we have all very qualified candidates there, but I think it would be best if we could avoid that, although I know Ms. McPherson's doing a great job on our Public Works Advisory Board as well. So maybe I'll pass the mic on and see where we can come to on it.
Thank you. If an individual in the community is so inclined to want to expose himself to significant punishment as being involved in two advisory committees, so be it, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, I'm more interested in the expertise, the values, the background, et cetera, that an individual brings. I do agree with Noah with regard to policy exceptions. I'm not comfortable routinely changing policy in the midst of process. However, in this case, I would feel comfortable and be okay with making an exception. So I would be fine with that and would be fine with the slate as presented.
Thanks, John. Matt?
As a matter of course, I would agree with you in terms of process, in terms of the normal boards, PWEB, Recreation, Harbor, but in this case, being the Citizens Oversight Board is going to meet relatively rarely throughout the year. I would recommend that we go with us now.
Christine?
Okay, thank you. I am comfortable, in this case, discussing the policy and then making an educated, you know, a decision across the board. I would feel better if we were unanimous about our decision to override the current policy as it's stated, though I prefer us to all agree to do that. I think that just feels more comfortable for me. And then I would be willing to take a look at the slate we have. So just for clarification, we have four applicants and four positions, correct? Just for folks listening?
Yes.
Okay. So because we had one person take their name off the list earlier today, so I would be comfortable really with, you know, having a short discussion with each of these individuals, give them a chance to speak to that, but then looking to then fill the whole committee tonight. And then perhaps it really is up to Ms. McPherson to decide if she wants to be on two committees as well. And, you know, I don't know if she wants to let us decide, but for her, but I would tell her my opinion if she asked, but I think that it may be that, you know, something is calling to her more than another, so, but just so if we could get agreement on that, then I would be more than comfortable. Thanks.
So just to be clear, so you want some input from Marlis? Sorry to keep you on, keep getting on, from input from Marlis during this discussion? Is that what you were asking for?
No. I'm considering that if it is, if it's, if we are unanimous about allowing the policy to float in this case, if we're comfortable with accepting the four who have applied, including Marlis, knowing that she's on also the PWEB, then after the appointment, it may be possible, you know, I would just suggest that, you know, we maybe be open to her saying, you know, "I'm on two, perhaps I prefer one." That's why I think bringing everyone up, because there may be other people who, I think there's another candidate, I think Ms. Schneider also is a double applicant, so she may have something that she wants to tell us about finance and then also about the GPAC. So I think we bring them up, have the conversation. But then if we do indeed approve all four, then there may be a decision that Marlis may want to make, and we can allow her to do that.
Okay, sounds great. You know, it sounds like we do have somewhat unanimous, I mean, I would support this as well, and just by way of policy, you know, it's, sorry to start it off this way, you know, everybody's kind of ready to do interview, and we're talking about procedures and policies, but just one of the steps, you know, our city attorney, Joe Penone, you know, as a rule, it's a general policy, and it's just an exception to that. So I would support the exception based, you know, purely on the conversation we, you know, we've had as policy and the condition which we're in. So with that, since we have complete support on that, we can move on to the next item. I don't think a motion or anything is necessary, and we can just move on to the next item. The next item to discuss would be how many people on the GPAC? We have 13 or 14, how many, Dana, did we have? We actually had 13 here present today, 13, and then we have two that are, that have submitted their letter saying that they couldn't attend, but submitted their application.
Seventeen originally, and two have withdrawn, so we have 15.
Okay, 17 originally, two have withdrawn, we have 15 total, and 13 present. So the question for council would be, what would be the makeup of the GPAC? And I'll just start off with my suggestion to start off the conversation. My suggestion would be, the number would be seven with two alternate. And, and we need to have clarity in, for what an alternate's role would be. So, and all, the alternates would be, and I'm just throwing this out for discussion, the alternates would be, basically, they would be at all the meetings, because if they were to provide the alternate, alternate role, they would need to be part of the original GPAC Committee. They would be non-voting unless they were actually stepped into the role, and as far as participating, if there was a board meeting amongst the GPAC board, they would, if they were to participate, they would be participating as the general public, not a board member. So those are my general comments on what I would view as a start, starting conversation point for the makeup of the board. And with that, I'll start to my left, and perhaps we can get the discussion complete. Christine?
Thanks. You know, we had this discussion slightly differently, but we did end up having a discussion about the WRF Citizens Advisory Committee, so the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens' Advisory Committee, and we ended up, it's good to have the discussion now because we ended up coming back, and it took a lot of time, because we ultimately, and that decision decided, but this was a previous council, I should also state, so I look forward to our new council members' feedback, but we did ultimately decide to remove the alternate positions and just go with the full board. So what I'm inclined to do today is go with nine and no alternates.
How about you, Matt?
Given the two choices that you presented and Christine's presented, I'm, and I understand that we want to keep it relatively small, because just for governing purposes, I would also be fine with nine, as Christine is saying, although I listen to what Noah and John are saying in terms of alternate, your suggestion. So I could, I vacillate either or, but I would listen to reason.
How about you, John?
Well, seeing as you have difficulty with just four people, no, managing four people, no, I'm just kidding. You know, it's tough to manage 12 people, but nine is probably, in my mind, the maximum that you want to go with a group of people. I do like the concept of having everybody involved. If you're going to have to sit through meetings and not be able to vote, maybe only occasionally because you're an alternate, might get a little frustrating. So seven versus nine, I have no problem with nine, however, that would really, in my mind, be the limit that I would suggest that we go with regard to that. So I'd be in favor of nine, no alternates.
I'm also in favor of nine. I think one of the reasons we didn't go ahead and state a number at our meeting before when we talked about formation of this committee was, we weren't sure just how much interest there was going to be, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't lock ourselves in, and we really let the qualifications present themselves, and looking at those qualifications, I see very, very high marks there, and I think nine is going to be a workable number. People all appear to have some good experience either working with other committees or in the direct areas of our GPAC, so I think nine is good because with seven and alternates, you're asking a lot for the alternates to put all that effort in and not really be able to have a voice at the table when it really comes down to the voting, so I'd prefer seven.
Okay.
Seven?
Excuse me. Nine.
It wasn't on the number.
Okay. Great. Well, I'm glad I didn't start off with nine because everybody might have gone to seven and two. But I'm definitely in support, a great conversation, and so that determines the model in which we'll move for the GPAC Committee, so that'd be nine, nine members and no alternates. Okay, great. And then, third topic would be non-residents. So we have, Dana, I think we just have two that are non-residents that have applied, and that's specific to the General Plan Advisory Committee. And there again, we got, Dana was very helpful with this, thank you very much, Joe also weighed in on that, and I think we've got some other just topic points that our city attorney, Joe Penone, weighed in on. So there's, there's nothing that identifies an exclusion for non-residents. Clearly, the council can have that discussion tonight. You know, as an example, for park and rec, we, the makeup of the Rec and Park Committee is seven members. In the advisory board handbook, it states that we have five that must be residents and two can be at-large non-residents. Harbor Advisory Board is another example. We have some commercial fishermen that are not residents of Morro Bay, but they are commercial fishermen within the city of Morro Bay, and they serve on the advisory board and they're non-residents, but we, as a, as a board, we're looking for that makeup of our Harbor Advisory Boards to have some sort of commercial fishing on that board. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion in whether or not, where council wants to go as far as allowing or not allowing non-residents, and I'm just going to say specifically to the General Plan Advisory Committee because that's the only where it applies. So Noah, I'll look to you at the end of the table to start us off on this conversation.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with non-residents being considered. I think there's an importance that there's a connection to Morro Bay, whether it's through home ownership or business ownership, but I would be cautious about, in my votes personally, I would be cautious about adding a significant number over, if, if, most are residents and there's one non-resident, but with a vested interest in Morro Bay in some way, I think that actually adds an interesting balance and perspective. So non-residents, in my opinion, should be considered.
Great. John?
I would agree with that. I, number one, I would not support a majority ever of non-residents, obviously, on any advisory committee. However, I do feel comfortable with non-residents. I do think at times they can bring a perspective from other communities that may well indeed bring something that would be valuable to this community, so I would support that.
Okay, great. Matt?
I'd also support it, and I, but I would cap it at two, two or three members of a nine-person board.
Christine?
That's interesting to add a cap to it, actually. You know, I want to just have this, what about residents, one thing, but what about property owner or business owner? I would be more cautious about appointing someone who was neither of those. I feel if they're a property owner in Morro Bay, but perhaps don't reside here full-time, then I would be comfortable with that. Or a business owner, some stake in the community financially, you know, because you either, that's a financial commitment, which means commitment usually, so I guess I would be comfortable with that. So I don't know if we know if either applicant is a property owner?
Or business.
Or business owner in the city of Morro Bay.
Well, I think we can determine that during the interview process, and maybe we can, it seems like there's support, I would be supportive of non-resident. I think you bring up a good point as far as a stakeholder, no different than the Harbor Advisory Board. We were looking for a stakeholder in that being commercial fishing, so, you know, stakeholder being business and resident, property owner or commercial property owner for that matter, seems acceptable and advantageous for some of the comments that were made by other town councils as well. So with that, we can probably clarify some of the other questions when it comes down to their role as far as their stakeholders and their, during the interview process.
Okay, good.
Okay, great. So, you know, as far as cap on this, I don't, do we want to close the loop on cap? I mean, we only have two applicants. I kind of feel as though we can just say generally that we're okay with non-residents and then just go with it. Any other discussion? Seeing none. So we were okay with non-residents for the General Plan Advisory Committee. And then finally, we did get consensus on that, correct? To the left and to the right?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then finally, the last one was applicants not in attendance. We've gone through this process once before, it is in our policies and our handbook, you know, for council to consider non-applic, or excuse me, applicants that are not present with an excuse, and we have two members, both of which had planned, you know, planned vacations during this time, so they put in their application, wrote us letters, and I think in the past, we've done that as well, we've considered the applicant with their letter. And so unless there's any other comments of objection for that, to my right, any objections or any discussion on the, someone in attendance? I got a no from Noah, so John?
No.
No, no comments and objections.
Comments?
Yeah.
No objection, I just, I think it's obviously important that, myself personally, if somebody is not here, unfortunately, they're at a disadvantage, and we're at a disadvantage if we do not know the individual or have not contacted the individual, which we have the opportunity to do prior to this, in making a determination off of a piece of paper that lists a curriculum vitae. So that's the discomfort that I have, is if, if a decision-maker has not contacted and/or does not know well the individual, I would have concerns myself about that. So I vetted the individuals myself prior to this, knowing that we're not going to be here, so. There's no opposition to it, but just that comment.
Great. Matt?
No comment, and I'm good with it.
Okay. Christine?
Yeah, we have done it in the past, and we haven't, I mean, we've basically accepted someone's ability to still apply, and I think it, although in the past, too, I find it successful if you are someone who's currently active in the community, and if, that's right, I think I agree with council member heading that it is upon- And if, that's right, I think I agree with council member heading that it is upon us to reach out to that candidate and figure out if it's still possible to, if I would feel comfortable appointing them, knowing that they're not actually here and going through the process. I think it, it does sort of depend. And I think if you're, where I think it does hurt the applicant most is if they're not quite involved enough in the community and we just don't know them, perhaps we haven't even met them in person. Then I think it's, it's unlikely to get appointed. But I think if there are people that are active, I know one of, Mr. Woodson is already appointed to the WRF CAC. CAC, so we, we have appointed him. And he did show up for that one, I should say. And then, yeah, so I'm comfortable moving forward with, they are eligible if they're not here.
Okay.
Okay.
I am as well. And great discussion. And I did vet both of the applicants when I got their applications. I went ahead and did some questions, and I'll disclose that when we get into the application, into that interview process. So everyone's aware of what that dialogue was. So that completes our housekeeping items. Thanks for that extended time that had to, that we had to get through on that. Yes? Okay, on this one? Thank you. Okay, so I would make a motion to accept the two applicants that are not in attendance to be considered for the General Plan Advisory Committee interview process.
Second.
We have a motion by Jamie, a second by John. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and then motion carries. Five of them. Thank you. Thanks for that, Dana. And so with that, that completes the, the technical part and the, the housekeeping part. And now, welcome once again. We'll move on to the order of business for the special meeting. And at this time, we'll start with the advisory board interviews for the recreation and, oh, thank you. Thanks for that reminder. So now we need to go into public comments. See, we get into the other, the other thing that we want to get moving. So thanks for that. Let's open it up for public comment for anybody who'd like to speak to anything on this agenda. Public comment is open. Go, Joan.
Good eve-, can you hear me? Good evening. I have a cold, so sorry, I'm not sure. Thanks for taking my comment. My name is Joan Solu. I'm your Morro Bay Tourism Bureau and Morro Bay T-Bid Advisory Board Chair. I hope that you have a great meeting tonight and that your head is clouded with wonderful people who live in our community when you leave here. I will not be staying for the full meeting. I have to pick my son up shortly, so that's why I want to make comment now. The T-Bid Advisory Board has three seats open right now, and as you know, there were three applicants up to about a week, maybe 10 days ago. And one of the applicants withdrew due to, I would say, significant transitional changes that are occurring at the property. So that leaves, we have tonight before you, two applicants for the board for three positions. As you know, the T-Bid is an assessment district, so the parameters for placing an individual on the board are fairly narrow. There, the board needs to be made up prevailing of those people that are assessed. One of the things that we did to kind of open up the pigeonhole that was on the board is we changed our own bylaws to reflect, to stop pigeonholing into number of rooms, but rather to say, any hotel you're at-large. We have a very small hotel population in Morro Bay. There are 35 hotels with about 20 owners. Of those 20 owners, you have already had six sit on the board, and we have two more folks applying here tonight. So we do have a great web of communication, and we tend to not want to put eight or 10 hoteliers up here to go through the interview process and when really we need, you know, two or three seats. So we had three folks who stepped forward, who said, you know, it's kind of my turn, willing to step up now from our small community and do this. But then we had one move into transition. I'd like to thank Fred Reed from the Inn at Morro Bay, probably the city's largest customer outside of Albertson's, for stepping forward and taking time out of his very busy schedule to apply for a position here on our T-Bid board. And also, I'd like to thank Roger Corwin from the Embarcadero Inn. I think that should they prevail tonight, the two of them will be fabulous additions to the board, and I'm looking forward to working with them both. So I would just ask that you would go through the process to reopen the position that remains. I know that it's an arduous task for the city to constantly go through this process, but I'm asking you to do it based on the fact of the, the narrowness and the specificity, specific positions. Let's just, the specific positions that need to be filled on our board are definitely, I think, different than general folks or even a property, meaning just a, you have 10,000 folks to pull from when you're looking for an advisory board. We have 20 here. So that's, that's what I'm getting to. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Anybody else for a public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Christine?
I just wanted to make a quick response. So I know that Ms. Solu said that the bylaws were changed for the T-Bid. Is there a change in how we're recruiting? Because one of the positions that is available tonight is, has, and I know that our city clerk, Ms. Swanson, is aware that there are certain requirements per each position. So do you still have that? My question would be, to clean it up, we don't have to decide it tonight, but in the future, if there's been a change in the bylaw, to let the city know so we recruit, so we put out the right information?
Yep, we did let the city know. Unfortunately, the bylaw change happened after you had already gone out with the notice.
Okay.
So that, that
Great, gotcha.
Kind of an overlap.
Okay, thanks.
Did you change the tourism bureau bylaws?
We did.
Okay. Which then there would be a change maybe to the T-Bid bylaws to match.
Okay, so we'll just connect, make sure, I just want to make sure that connection's made because there are particular things to that board. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Joan.
Sorry, I'm just making some notes here. Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none? Okay. All right, thank you for a public comment. We'll close public comment and start with our advisory board interviews. First up is our Recreation and Park Commission. We have two openings. And with that, we'll move into our first one here, pardon me. That would be Mr. Cox, Ms. Robert, and Ms. Wilson as applicants for these positions. Welcome, everyone. Checking the mics. Okay. I'll just make, I've just got a brief statement from our advisory board's handbook, and it's basically the purpose of our Recreation and Park Commission. I'll just read the opening statement for you all. The Recreation and Parks Commission is established to provide the following, to act in an advisory capacity to the city council in all matters pertaining to parks, public recreation, and to cooperate with other governmental agencies and civic groups in the advancement of sound recreation parks, planning, and programming. The board shall make reports and recommendations to various city boards, commissions, or the city council on the above matters. When requested to do so, we'll review items referred to by other city boards, commissions, or city council. Resulting reports and recommendations will be included in a presentation before city council. There's a list of others, but I just thought I'd open with that general overview of our Recreation and Park Board, and just wanted to welcome you. And if you can, we'll just open up with a just brief introduction. I know we have a big night tonight, so if you just kind of contain it to a minute, and I'll do my best to, to monitor time for the, the whole interview process since we have a full night tonight. So Karen, if you would introduce yourself and do a brief introduction, maybe we could start with you. Ms. Roberts?
My name is Karen Robert, and I'm resident. It's off.
Turn it towards you.
Pull the button towards you.
The, the, pull the button towards you. Try now. There we go.
My name is Karen Robert, and I'm a resident of Morro Bay. And I am passionate about recreation programs because of my background in programming and activities. I've been doing it for almost 25 years at the college level. And since retiring from Questa College, I have been doing it at the library for almost 10 years. And I think there's so much that can be done in our city, and I'd love to be a part of it as we transition here in Morro Bay.
Thank you. Elian, if you can.
There we go. My name is Elian Wilson. I am originally from the French Alps, and most of my outdoor involvement as I grew up was the mountains as opposed to the ocean. I have found in this area many opportunities for outdoor exercise and enjoyment. And I guess at this point in my life, getting close to retirement from a very formal transportation background, I see potential for being more involved within the community where I live and also participating in program for younger people in addition to looking for option to broaden activities for seniors that are growing in our city.
Thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Cox, and I'm a resident here in Morro Bay. And I have a number of things that I think qualify me for Rec and Park. Number one, I was a Park and Rec Commissioner in the city of Alhambra for eight, eight years. I was a National Park Ranger in Yosemite and Sequoia for 10, 10 years. And I have been a coach and athlete and high school teacher for over 32 years. So I've worked in the area of recreation and activities for most of my adult life. And I feel that this particular position, I am highly qualified, and I hope the five of you will agree.
Thank you for that introduction. And so as a way, another kind of way of process for us in the past, what we've done, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as council. We've just gone through, we, each council member has a question. And then we'll start through with the applicant, and Karen, I'll start with, pardon me if I just be so comfortable. So we'll start with you first, and then we'll go through, and then on the next question, we might start from the other end and mix it up. But I'll look to my left and have Christine start us off with questions, and then we'll go through council. And then once we complete with all those questions, we'll go, that'll, that'll complete all the questions for the interview, and then we'll go ahead and compile our remarks. Christine?
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. My question is about youth sports, and that's because recently, we found some data that indicated that the city of Morro Bay, our population, we've got 49% of our population currently is under the age of 59. So I think that may surprise folks. It's been a little surprising. So given that, within that 49% of our population, 18% are under 20. So that's a fair amount of youth in our community, and there are more coming all the time. Our elementary school is impacted right now, which means they sent some kids early to the middle school. So given that we do have young people here, there's things that you've observed about our youth programs that you would like to see perhaps shored up? Or are there great youth programs that you know about from your past experience that you think we could adapt here in Morro Bay? So just a little bit about youth rec, given those parameters. Karen, I think the mayor said you were beginning.
Karen, sure.
I am. Okay.
Yes. But next time, you won't have to.
Thank you. I just feel that we don't do enough public-private partnerships around here. There are so many different programs throughout that we aren't taking advantage of. I know, I know there's Project Surf Camp. I know there's different places that we are doing some things about. But there are other organizations throughout the town that we can be doing things with. We can be doing more things with the schools that could make things a lot more successful for us in being able to provide more programs. It doesn't have to cost the city that much if we partnership with a lot more programs that are already existing, even the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Clubs, different types of organizations. Great, thank you.
Elian?
Yes. What I see is there are, there are resources there, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of joint effort with the school district when that is where the child is spending most of the day during the week. It seems to me there is a potential for working together. I mean, the one opportunity that I have understood at this point because of the measure of funding that has been secured in the last election is this new swimming pool, which hopefully will be a resource not just for the youth, but other age group as well. But that is not something that's going to happen next week. So it would just be a matter of what, what are the resources that the school has? And are they willing to share it with city-sponsored program?
Well, I, I also would agree that there, in a smaller community, there is really a need to create bridging made with other groups that involve themselves with young people. For example, the yacht club, I think, has some programs dealing with youth sailing programs and so on. I think there is room for perhaps bridging some connection there in order to maybe recruit more kids to be involved, and maybe the city has an opportunity to assist the, the yacht club. I also think that we have a wonderful golf course in this area, and I think that they have just recently started a teaching program for all ages of golf, and I think that it would be a good opportunity, perhaps, to bridge a gap with that organization to bring young people into the, the game of golf. And then there's always the mainstays of, such as baseball, and I suggest that we work hard to recruit maybe young players that are playing at the high school level to involve themselves in working with the younger kids in the area, perhaps holding technique camps and so on for them. Same with soccer and, and basketball. I think all of those can be done with really some outreach. And hopefully, that percentage of young people that Christine has mentioned, we can touch all of them and get them involved in an activity and a sport that fits them and something that they enjoy and have a passion for.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thanks. Matt?
Elian, I think we start with you on this one. How would you approach the balance in terms of Rec and Parks between youth sports, adult sports, and senior activities?
I think to answer the question, I would need to see like a budget sheet and a program of current activities, see what kind of a balance we have. You know, cursory review of the senior center compared to several senior center I have visited over the years, there is a lot more that could be done for seniors in this complex. It's a great building, but there's something about generating activities that actually makes them want to stay there for more than a short amount of time. As far as the adult group, I think it's more challenging because most people that are in that age bracket do not actually work in Morro Bay. They might, you know, when they come back, they They might, you know, when they come back, they may not really have the inclination to do something in the community. There are classes at Morro Bay High School, there are some activities in this center. Those things are, I don't know how well attended they are. I do know it's good to have them, but maybe some kind of evaluation to have a feel for the participation level and the amount of people that actually stay with the program as opposed to people that try it for a few months and then drop out. That would be what I would do.
Thank you. John?
Excuse me. I also feel that we need to take a look at the number of individuals that we have in each category of seniors, adults, and youth and get an understanding also of the fact that we need to think in terms of both male and female activities. I, I think that the, I've always basically been focused on the youth aspects, but I know we live in a community of seniors and so I too would take a look at what we currently are doing at the senior level and want to encourage perhaps expansion maybe into music programs and art programs along with expansion of some maybe types of aerobics, low-impact aerobics and so forth and to help in that area. And then of course for the middle, the adult group, I think one of the activities always draws young, young people would be slow pitch or some type of softball program, sometimes adult basketball leagues help and once again, trying to bridge a connection with the high school for their facilities and so forth would be helpful for that.
I think to get a good balance, we need to really understand what everyone wants and needs and part of it would be to survey and find out where our community is. Right now, we don't have any balance. There isn't really any programming that is occurring. When you think about it, if you look at what we are already offering, we don't have this facility being fully utilized, it's not even open on weekends. And we don't necessarily have to be offering all of our events or activities right here at this facility. We could be doing things on the beach, we can be doing things in our local businesses, again with private partnerships, private and public partnerships. So I think we need to know what our community wants and needs because there's a whole slew of different activities that we could be providing, working with our local businesses as well to provide it.
Great answers. I'll continue my, my question and pass it on to you guys here. So starting with Jeff on this one, we've had some conversation about programs, but also part of the duties for our commission to evaluate our facilities. I know we talked, Karen talked a little bit about the facilities here at the community center, but there's, there's rec areas, there's parks and facilities, open spaces is one of those. And so could you speak to your thoughts on the needs of facilities or at least, you know, just give a general conversation about your hopes and desires of what our facilities should look like here in the city?
Well, first of all, I think that a good ad campaign so our citizens know where all of our parks are located. I've been here quite a long time and it's sometimes missed that apart in the north part of Morro Bay, sometimes people don't realize the park facilities they have in that area. For example, pickleball is offered in North Morro Bay and great activity and so it would be good to advertise a little bit where these facilities are. Secondly, I think there ought to be a real look at the safety that we have with some of the facilities that we have in the park, for example, playground equipment and so forth, making sure that we have, have it updated and it isn't decaying and becoming dangerous for young people who are using it. And, and then I'm always open for looking for open areas where we could have any kind of activity. I think being on the coast with the beach areas, there would be areas that we could have activities in those areas and enhance the activities there that would be beneficial to, to what we're doing as far as recreation. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
I think in this past year and a half, there has been quite an improvement in the look of some of the city of Morro Bay public places with the various well-coordinated help of the Morro Bay and Bloom. And what I see from that group is you don't just fix things because people that live in the city need it to be a certain way. And a place that we definitely fix things is the park, the major destination when you get off Morro Bay Boulevard and not two benches are the same and they are not comfortable, especially the one that are made of concrete. It just doesn't, you know, it's not attractive. In addition to that, what I see a missing link in the community is proper signage to help visitors, tourists, to find where you can walk in order to get, for instance, to Black Hill. Most people that come out of town, actually what they end up doing is driving up that road, which means they are really shortening the lengths of their walk and it's basically because they don't know you can get there some other way. On the waterfront, there are improvements being made around the staircase and I understand further improvements are going to be made on the far reach of the Embar Cadero. When you go the other way, the large boardwalk project that was successful leading to the rock, I don't know whether it's a budget situation or whether it's a climate situation, but there is not a lot of natural planting on either side of the path. I do not know whether that is part of Park and Rec, whether that is something that belongs to the state.
Great, Elian, thank you. Karen?
I'm a little confused.
So you want me, I'll, I'll, so I was, I opened with, we'd been talking about programs, but we have other, we have facilities, of course, is one of the topics of the Rec and Park, but there's, you know, there's parks, there's the facilities within that, open spaces is another one. And, and then, so can you just talk about maybe your perception of the facilities and as I close, it was kind of your hopes and desires of what you think we can do for our facilities and parks and stuff within the Park and Rec program?
Well, marketing is really key and programming is key. And the more that we can program, the more aware people can be of where we are and what we're doing. And I guess the part where I'm confused is that I thought we were just recreation now. So I'm confused about parks being part of this too now. So that's why I'm...
That's okay. We have a little bit of both.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, if, wherever we are programming, we can be anywhere in Morro Bay and that's going to make people more aware of our facilities.
Okay. Great. That's nice. There's no right or wrong answer. That's great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we'll go on to John?
See, I'm not sure whose turn it is, possibly Jeff.
Sure, let's start with Elian.
Oh, okay. So in, in, in the 60s, an innovative study was done and it was done in a community that compared itself to another community that was very similar and they found that the degree or the incidence of cardiovascular disease, hypertension, and depression was lower in the community that had three attributes. One was adequate nutrition for seniors, two was adequate socialization for seniors, and the third was adequate physical activity. And those three things significantly communicated, actually contributed to longevity. So my question is, how would you motivate so-called the senior group to participate in programs, given the fact that nationally, the statistics show that less than 25% usually participate in recreational activities on a weekly basis?
I think to motivate seniors, you have to start with younger seniors that they kind of have an easier time relating to and they kind of work with them as a role model. The difference that I agree on the three points that you highlighted that made a senior much healthier, I think coming from a European setting where walking is definitely a daily routine and we are not concerned if we have to walk 10 blocks from the place that we parked, we don't consider that to be too far away. So beside finding circles of seniors with common interest, which sometimes needs to be done maybe at the neighborhood level as opposed to at the city level, I see benefits of using the senior center as a central, kind of the core of a program, but having people go out to smaller sites that, where they would be like ambassadors to people living in the area. You could start maybe with three people that know each other and then you kind of grow it from there through the neighbors. It is sometimes something as simple as knowing that somebody needs help with gardening and then getting them involved into something else that will get them out of the house. Does that answer your question?
My turn?
Thank you. Let's, let's go ahead.
I always end up last.
Let's, let's go to, that's a good point. Let's go to Karen then. We started off first.
Well, I'm a senior and what motivates me is I like to stretch and I like to walk and I like yoga and I like aerobics and I like to spin and I like to find classes that are going to get me to do all those things. And if you offer them, I will take them. So, and people like to dance and they'll find, if you offer the classes, they will come. So I'm just saying that we can do that here in Morro Bay and we can partner with our local businesses to do it. We have a yoga studio, we have fitness works, we have other fitness gyms, they can provide, again, I keep bringing up these private-public partnerships, that we could create these independent contractor experiences and have these wonderful opportunities that aren't going to cost the city any extra money and create extra recreation programs through the city of Morro Bay and provide the senior experiences and get them out doing these things and have these extra classes and make us seniors happy and healthy. Thank you.
How about you, Jeff?
Okay. Well, due to my background as the park ranger, I'm, I'm thinking that we live in one of the really wonderful environments there is in California. So my, my idea would be to create programs to get seniors outdoors. And one of the ways you would do this is in the general concept, you would create nature walks. We have Black Hill, we have the Sands Spit, we have the Eschuary, we have wonderful locations where we could create these walks and we could create themes such as photo walks, we could have bird, bird watching, bird identification walks, we could have sea mammal observation and identification and then we could the, create maybe a painting program, taking people out in the outdoors and having instructions on drawing and painting, the landscape and so forth. And I think that many seniors are here because they love the environment and they love the outdoors. So I think if we provide programs that offer a number of different topics in outdoor exercise, they would do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Noah?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to just ask you a question that's going to be a little specific to whoever ends up being on the commission because we've talked quite a bit and there are many studies showing that quality of life can be an economic driver and we're aware of that and thinking about that with our economic programs. But we're also under certain limitations financially and we're going through a process right now where we're looking at fee subsidies and trying to determine what's appropriate for how much we subsidize different programs, whether it's within Rec and Parks or the harbor or so forth. And it's a responsible action that we're taking that you would be involved with. So how, how would you approach that? Because every program we offer has a number of participants, some more than others, that value that program and in some cases have financial limitations. So what, what's your mindset going in? First, is it appropriate to subsidize certain programs and how would you try to value which programs would receive more subsidies than others or, or certain populations?
So let's start off with Karen this time. I think we got that right.
Is it appropriate to subsidize programs? I know I've probably been most critical of that sometimes and frustrated when I've seen the money go out that way. I haven't liked seeing that. I think what I would really like to see is more partnerships with the local businesses. I'd like to see them subsidizing it because they're the ones that are benefiting from the tourism. And, you know, you're giving money to the tourism board, you're giving a lot of money to the tourism board, you've been giving money to the chamber, they're the ones that are getting the benefit of the events that are happening. So I'd like to...
I should have clarified, certain recreation programs, just to stay focused on your compartment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was thinking of the big, I was thinking of the Fourth of July as, as the big thing. I'm sorry.
And there are some overlap with events, of course, but if you could focus your comments to the recreation side for just tonight.
Great. Now I'm really lost. Okay.
Well, for, for example, we do subsidize some programs, recreation-based programs because of financial challenges of different participants or because we want to make sure that it remains available even though we are not receiving full cost recovery for the, the fees that come in for that program. And we're putting that all on the board and looking at it to... at it to determine, is this sustainable? Is this worth the effort? And the question was, do you feel that it's appropriate to consider that? And if so, how would you start to value or parse the different levels of subsidies that could be available? And it's a big question, so if you could limit it to, you know, kind of a general yes, and maybe a mindset that you'd go into to help you wade through. That's somewhat of an emotional decision at some point.
It sounds like it. I think if you have a certain budget that's planned for the recreation program, is that what you're, you have that, and then there's an expectation for where that budget is going for the recreation program, and then they don't meet budget, is that what's happening, and then they're asking for more money? I guess I'm-
Well, we're, actually, we've initiated a review of all of our programs, and to look at cost recovery of those programs, and whether they're, how much we're subsidizing different programs. And this is kind of getting to be a much bigger question.
It's a hard question, for sure.
Well, if you could let me know if you think that it's appropriate to subsidize some recreation programs, and what, to what degree-
Isn't that what the foundation is supposed to do?
The community foundation does that as well. The city does its own subsidies in some cases. Do you think it's appropriate to subsidize recreation programs? Let's just leave it there.
No.
Okay. Aileen?
Okay. I call that cost recovery. By law, in this town, your public transportation has to have a minimum of 10% cost recovery, which is tiny. And I can't imagine taking out something that doesn't have as good a cost recovery as something else. I would think that's a criteria, but it certainly shouldn't be the sole criteria. You have to think about the quality of the program and the benefits, maybe not only to the local population, but to the visitors to the area. And if you structure the fees, maybe you pay a little more if you're not from Morro Bay. Just a thought. Another consideration, which is becoming pretty well-accepted in the transportation industry, is to provide a lower fee for the lower-income bracket, affecting in particular in San Francisco the seniors and the youth. And it is a little tricky to make that determination, but I would think while you're doing that, maybe raise a fee a little bit for the rest of the participant. Just a thought.
Thanks, Aileen.
Excuse me again. Generally, my answer is yes. And I would start with, I would be favorable to subsidize youth programs. I think the youth of our community is key to, they're the future, and I think we ought to take that into consideration when we are providing programs. Secondly, for other programs, I think it would, we'd have to build some degree of criteria, one of which would be the popularity of the program. And secondly, the value of the program as far as health and exercise and those kinds of elements. But in general, I think that when possible, we should attempt to support certain programs that we feel are in fact valuable.
Okay, great. Well, that concludes the questions. I appreciate everybody attending and applying to the board. At this point, Dana, well, the ballots that you gave us, you have us with a single vote. We'll do it one vote at a time. So, you have a vote for the opening that expires in 2018, and then there's an opening that expires in 2016. And it makes sense, we could just do one vote at a time, and then just, and do it that way. So, if everybody understands with the ballot, well, instead of just saying, hey, let's fill the two positions, we do one vote for the position that expires in 2018. Pass those over to Dana, and then we come back and we vote for the position that expires on 2016. Okay? And with that, we can start with the 2018, which one we want to cast our vote, and we'll pass it over to Dana. She'll send it back.
This is the vote for the Recreation and Parks Commission, and this is for the term that's expiring January 31st, 2018. Mayor Irons voted yes for Aileen Wilson. Councilmember Johnson voted yes for Jeffrey Cox. Councilmember Mackewetzky voted yes for Karen Roberts. Councilmember Heding voted yes for Jeffrey Cox. Councilmember Smukler voted yes for Karen Roberts.
Okay. There's a tie. So, it seems like you can send it back. So, we have a consensus on two. You can send it back to, who's the tiebreaker there?
You.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I can go and do that. Yeah.
Jamie wants to break the tie.
Yeah.
Break the tie? I mean, does anyone mind? Do you want to just break the tie?
I think so. I think that'd be simpler.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't think we all have to re-vote.
Sure. No, no, we don't. I think it'd just be, so-
Oh, well, I guess we might want to re-vote.
That's what I'm saying.
All entire-
Do you want to re-vote, or?
Okay.
Which is a consideration. You guys all want to re-vote, or just?
Sure.
Okay. I'll take mine. Matt? Christine? And then? Just, oops. Yeah, exactly.
I'm thinking, I think they're actually revoting. I think they voted.
Watch and switch.
Everyone's like, I forgot my power cord.
Yeah, that's where I was going. Okay, all right. Okay, we'll do this again. Councilmember Mackewetzky voted yes for Karen Roberts. Mayor Irons voted yes for Jeffrey Cox. Councilmember Johnson voted yes for Jeffrey Cox. Councilmember Heding voted yes for Jeffrey Cox. Councilmember Smukler voted yes for Karen Roberts. Jeffrey Cox will be the individual voted, elected to the position for the expiration date of 1/31/18 for the Rec and Parks Commission. Congratulations.
And congratulations. Thank you.
The vote for the Recreation and Parks Commission for the position that's expiring on January 31st, 16. Councilmember Smukler voted yes for Karen Roberts. Councilmember Heding voted yes for Aileen Wilson. Mayor Irons voted yes for Aileen Wilson. Councilmember Johnson voted yes for Karen Roberts. And Councilmember Mackewetzky voted yes for Karen Roberts.
Great. Congratulations. Thanks very much for applying, everyone, and going through the interview process. Thank you very much. And thanks for everyone out there. Our next application process will be our Citizens Oversight Committee and Citizens Finance Committee. There are four openings for that, and those who are applying for that position, if you'd please come forward. Welcome, everyone. Thanks. I know it may be awkward sitting and watching the interviews and then having to step in, but thank you. I hope it's not too uncomfortable for you all. I've been through it myself, and, but certainly appreciate everyone coming forward today. And with that, if we can just, we'll start off with introductions, and I'll, I have the sheet in front of me, so I'll just start on the order in which it's before me instead of looking at that. And Betty Forsyth, if you do the introduction, I appreciate it.
I guess it's okay to be first. I've lived 21 years in Morro Bay, and during the 21 years in this lovely community, I've spent it all volunteering. So, I have worked with the Morro Bay Public Library for 10 years as fundraising, and I also helped with the San Luis Obispo Public Library Foundation that I started there. I also worked with the Friends of the Morro Bay Fire Department, started that, and currently on that board. And I am currently now volunteering at St. Timothy's Fabulous Finds Store, and I am their chief financial officer, and I am also the, on the finance committee at the church. My career background is that I, we graduated from Hunter College in the city of New York, and I hope nobody holds that against me. But I did have an economics major and a business education minor. And I remember my economics teacher telling me, it ain't what you have that counts, but it's what you got. So, I hope the finance committee will like that. I have a doctorate in school administration. I have worked for the Paramount Unified School District for 27 years, where I had large schools. It was very interesting that we had populations of 1,200 students, 60 staff members, and budgets of 1.5 million per school. It's not quite like that now. And so, I worked on that, in that area, and I enjoy doing everything that I've done. And as a senior, I enjoy continuing doing those things and keeping my brain cells working. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. And next is Greg Head.
Hi, I'm Greg Head. Hi, I'm Greg Head. I've lived in Morro Bay approximately five years. I have about 20-plus years' experience working with governmental organizations, mostly in a consulting capacity, but I've also been an employee of a county. My career experience primarily focused on the implementation of financial systems during that period of time. And contrary to most people's impression, when you say a financial system, they think technology, they think it's, you know, sort of a geek-type of project. Those projects are very much business projects, because they're a chance for the organization to look at the policies, the procedures, how they do business, and re-engineer their business processes. So, through that experience, I've become pretty accustomed to all the administrative functions at city, county, and state level. So, I know these documents pretty well from my experience. And so, I hope that familiarity and maybe that background can help in some way with the city of Morro Bay. I have a master's degree in business administration and a bachelor's in engineering. And by the way, I have a little bit of back issues, so once in a while, if I'm not talking, I might stand up back here, if that's okay.
Great, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Marlaus McPherson.
Hello, I'm Marlaus McPherson. I have lived in Morro Bay now for 11 and 1/2 years, and I have come to absolutely love this community. And I firmly believe in citizen involvement in the community. I have been very active also over the last several years in the community. I am a docent at the State Park at the Morro Bay Natural History Museum. I was on the Measure J Committee. I'm on the Central Coast State Parks Association Board, and I am also on the PWA Board, where I was recently elected chair. And I do want to thank the council for making an exception in my case, because I'm very interested in this committee, and I think I could hopefully bring some knowledge and expertise, and I want it to succeed.
Thank you, Marlaus. Appreciate that. And Susan Schneider?
Well, I guess it's okay to be last. Yeah, I'm Susan Schneider. I've lived in Morro Bay for approximately eight years. I guess that makes me a newbie compared to some people here. But during that time, I've kept up on all of the major issues affecting Morro Bay. I do a lot of walking. I know a lot of people mention that you've seen me walking everywhere. We do a walk every day. But generally speaking, I have a very, as you can see, I've got two economics degrees. I have a very strong background in project finance and contracting. And what I've tried to emphasize in the statement of interest was I have a great deal of experience in contract negotiation and the ability to bring diverse groups together to come to some common ground. And I know finance is a very controversial and emotional issue sometimes, and sometimes it's good to be able to see where, instead of looking at where there are conflicts, see where there's agreement, and try and build on that agreement. So, I would really hope to be able to bring those kind of skills to my activity on this board. I did also apply for the General Plan Committee. If I have to choose between them, I would probably choose that one, but it seems like the meetings are not so frequent between the two that I think that I could probably participate in both if that was allowed. I do on my own business, so I have some flexibility there, as long as most of the meetings are in the evenings.
Thank you for that, Susan. And so, bringing it back to council, we have four applicants. Looking at their resumes, it's, you know, I opened a discussion on whether or not we want to go through all the interview questions, or just have, you know, I would forego my question and pass it on to other council members, you know, to help expedite maybe some of the process. Obviously, your breadth of- Obviously, your breadth of background and resumes is excellent, so very impressive.
Understatement.
Yeah, so any other comments on that? Do you have any suggestions?
Oh, I just do want to recognize our city clerk, Dana Swanson, because I think that what's made this process easy and what makes me comfortable doing this tonight is that we have all the applicant's information, except their personal information, which was redacted, on the internet, on our city website. So I think what we saw in these four candidates, everyone else also was able to see, so that helps us. I think that it's necessary to bring people forward and have them speak to the interview process, because sometimes people do much better in person than they do on paper. So in this case, their introductions of themselves were quite excellent, and I think we all agree that they have the skill set necessary and then some, so I would be comfortable just to appoint all four.
That's great. Any other comments, John? Okay, that'd be great. So there are two different term limits. If there's a preference from the applicants on the terms, maybe we can start there. If not, we would, we can go ahead and make, cast a vote on which terms we would prefer to appoint. Are there any requests from the applicants on which term you'd be prefer?
Not really, but I'm just curious why there are two different terms. Isn't it a new committee?
Yeah, and Dana, maybe you can help us with that, if you could turn on the mic. These, we actually, these are vacated terms. So it is, this is a, we've combined Citizens Advisory, the Citizens Oversight Committee, and the Citizens Finance Committee, but we did have some resignations from some members on the Oversight Committee, so we are filling those vacated positions. That's why we have, and basically, we have one opening for, for a term that expires January 31st, 2018, and then three that expire January 31st, 2016. So if, you know, if there's a preference for one, obviously, there's one opening for a term that goes to 2018, and if, you know, by default, we can go ahead and cast that vote for you unless there's a preference by any of you.
I would prefer the shorter term, please.
Okay, great. So that makes that easy.
Does anybody prefer the longer term?
Okay. It doesn't matter today. Okay, so why don't we just go ahead and cast and submit, and we know where Mr. Head stands, and then we'll just do it that way. That's okay. All right, thank you.
Mackiewetzki chose Marlis McPherson for the January 31st, 2018 expiration date. Councilmember Johnson chose Betty Forsythe for the January 31st, 2018. Mayor Irons chose Marlis McPherson. Oh, you want to check? Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Heading chose Susan Schneider, and Councilmember Smuckler chose Susan Schneider. I gotta get stuck here. All right, we'll try this one again. So for the January 31st, 2018 expiration date, Councilmember Johnson chose Marlis McPherson. Councilmember Mackiewetzki chose Marlis McPherson. Mayor Irons chose Susan Schneider. Councilmember Heading chose Susan Schneider. And Councilmember Smuckler chose Marlis McPherson. Okay. Sorry. It's fine. Okay, so it's Marlis.
It's Marlis.
No, thank you very much. I do not decline. I'm looking forward to serving.
Thank you all for applying, and I'd like to recognize our other member in the audience, Barbara Spagnola, for attending as an observer, so to speak, but one of our members on the Oversight Committee, so just wanted to recognize you. Thank you, Barbara, for coming out, and thanks again for your applying and welcome. We're glad to have you.
So are we on? You're on.
You're on, ma'am. You can't expand now.
Thanks, Betty. So next item on our agenda is our Tourism Business Improvement District. And I think we will take all the applicants for this. We have applicants for, we have three openings for this, but we only have two applicants. Is that correct? Three vacancies, and we have two applicants. So if Mr. Corwin and Mr. Reed. Welcome, everyone, thank you. And just want to extend thanks for applying and your patience for waiting through the process, along with, we have one more to go up here, so thanks very much. And I'll just go through the same thing, and if you can just start off with the introduction, and I'm just going to go off the list on who's first here, so Mr. Corwin, if you can start off with an introduction, that'd be great.
Thank you. My name is Roger Corwin. I have been in the county since 1997. Have only been in Morro Bay for the last 14 months. I'm the manager at the Embarcadero Inn, working for Karen Biajini. I have, in the 35-plus years that I've been in the hotel business, have had the honor of serving on two or three visiting convention bureau boards, have been instrumental in performing hotel manager associations, been very involved with developing tourism within the city that I've been in, or the county, and look forward to doing the same here.
Great, thank you very much. And Mr. Reed.
Hi, I'm Fred Reed. I've been down in Slow County for the past eight years. Built most of my career in the Bay Area. Ran hotels with my father's hotel management company since I was 18. I've been in the business all of my career. Went to Memphis State University and got a degree in hospitality. I've been down here at the Inn at Morro Bay, where I'm currently the GM, for the past four months. And I was involved in starting the Business Improvement District in Paso Robles in, oh, like '09, I guess, and worked on developing that, that project, worked on kicking it off, where I opened the courtyard in Paso in, in '08. I've done just about everything there is to do in the hospitality industry. My father had his own company. I ran that company for a number of years. On the other side of that coin, my mother was in government all of her career. She worked for, she was county executive for Santa Clara County and the County of Los Angeles, so all of my life I've had through osmosis, plenty of the other side of that coin, if it's another side, and not a partnership. So very excited to serve on this, and would love the opportunity to find ways to, to highlight Morro Bay. I think it only needs exposure, it doesn't need improvement, so.
Great, great openings, thank you. We basically have the same opportunity with this process as well. Two great candidates. Once again, we've had the applications and resumes for both of you. We have three vacancies, we only have two openings, so it would be, you know, I think we'd all be in consensus to have you on the board, and I'll take any other comments in that regard. Matt, Christine?
Again, it's just that when we announced the vacancy, we hadn't heard yet from the Tourism Bureau or the T-Bid, that they had changed their bylaws. So I think maybe want to throw out there that we could, the hotelier for 50 rooms or less, would it be Mr. Corwin's spot? So we should just be pretty clear about that perhaps, because the room, the property he manages is 50 rooms or less, correct, Embarcadero Inn? So we could, if we're doing that, we just like put him in there and then ensure that, yeah, Mr. Reed is at the at-large position. Okay, just want to be sure, because I don't want us to come back and redo something if we weren't clear.
Thanks for the clarification. So as it's, as it's listed on our ballot and for the application process, just to restate what Councilmember Christine Johnson said, so Mr. Corwin, as it's listed here, you would be appointed for 50 units or less, and Mr. Reed would be member at large, as it's laid out in our ballot sheet. Are there any other clarifications or discussions for that? Seeing none, is there a consensus to move to appoint both of these?
Still conceding.
Okay?
Yes.
So we were just kind of in general consensus, those?
Yes.
Okay, so is that clear enough for you? Do we need to, do you need to see our ballots come forward? We're good on that? So that was a pretty simple process. You know, thank you for those introductions, and we look forward to having you. Congratulations. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
And Mr. Corwin, I think, is up next for the TMD as well, and we have one more, one more interview process. We have, I don't see Val Seymour in the audience. Oh, there she is. Okay, welcome, everyone. Once again, we're going, and this is for the Slow County Tourism Marketing District. So this is a newer position, and Christine, do you want to talk a little bit more about that? I know you're more, you're pretty involved with the TMD and the EVC, and basically, this, the TMD was fairly, is newly formed. I didn't know if you wanted to add to, to the marketing district at all.
Sure, yeah, well, right, that was, that happened when I was the liaison to the Tourism Bureau and the, and the T-Bid, so I have a little bit more knowledge about it. So basically, this is the city's opportunity to appoint one person to the advisory board for the countywide tourism marketing district. So this person will not attend, well, likely they will attend in an advisory role to come and speak in public comment or other presentations, to report back, my assumption is, what's happening at the countywide tourism marketing district, but this person will not be on our Morro Bay T-Bid or our Morro Bay, therefore the Tourism Bureau. But I want to give, actually, Mr. Corwin a chance to respond. He and I spoke previously about his application, and he might want to make some announcements about his position here, if we would allow him to do that at some point. It may make things more clear.
Certainly. Can you explain the conversation, the content?
Oh, yeah, sure. Well, ex parte is, I try to call people when I can in advance of the events of tonight, especially if we haven't yet met or haven't yet, don't know them. So through our conversation, I think that, I would allow, I would prefer if Mr. Cowan sort of spoke for himself, but I think that he may, perhaps there was one or the other he was weighing, and we may have given him an opportunity to, we may make it easier for ourselves on the voting if we ask him to address his interest in the TMD spot.
Okay. Great, thank you. Mr. Corwin, if you can elaborate on that, that would be great.
You're doing a great job. Keep going.
Well, I'm not sure he wants to do it, but let's have him say that. Now I think he may have selected one over the other.
When I had originally submitted the application, there were, for both positions, one or the other, and I would much prefer sitting on the advisory board on the city rather than on the county T-Bid.
Okay.
I'm sure that we will, I'm sure that the Tourism Board, Advisory Board, will also have some input and some say within the T-Bid, and we will be staying very much on top of that, but I'd be happy just with the one at this point.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
I'd like to learn to walk or crawl before I walk.
Sure. Well, I think it'd be, we got your introduction. I think it'd be great for the audience to have an introduction of Val Seymour, if you could give us an introduction, and we'll, we'll start there, Val, and we'll introduce you from that, if you could start off, thanks.
I don't have any competition.
You can say anything you want now.
That's why you want me on the T-Bid, I'm a fighter. I'm going to help put Morro Bay on the map for the county.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's really super happy about adding that extra.
I think we all heard you.
Get used to using your microphone, Val. He wants you up there.
I don't think. Yeah, so, yeah, I don't think anybody's really super happy about the extra 1%. So.
Technical difficulty.
There you go. Okay, I'll quiet it down a little bit.
So that extra 1%, yeah. I don't think, probably the vacation rentals are real happy about it, or the hotels, but it's a reality, and I feel like I need to make sure that we get represented. I've served on the T-Bid Board, so I did my job there. I know all about that. That's a good background to have for it. I served on the Harbor Advisory Board, and recently have been very active with the Community Pool Foundation, representing that group and helping to get Measure D passed with, worked very hard with the school district and the Parks and Rec Department on all of that, and I look forward to continuing to do that. So like I say, I think I'm your girl.
Well, I don't know if there's any rebuttal to that.
Let's just vote.
I'll second that she's my girl.
Okay, well, thanks for coming up, and Mr. Corwin, thanks, you know, for applying and your graceful withdrawal. Val, thanks for coming up with your boxing gloves, and we're ready to move Morro Bay forward. Thanks, I think by default, we have our, it's clear for our staff, and thanks again. Congratulations to both of you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so can we do, we have a request for just a short break? We have just a short break. Sorry to keep you, five-minute break, and we'll be right back for the G-PAC. Okay, folks, we're back to our meeting. And the next item on the agenda is our General Plan Local Coastal Commission, our Local Coastal Plan Advisory Board, that's our G-PAC. Just prior to getting into that interview process, I just have to bring us back to our last vote on the T-Bid, and specifically the TMD. So for ex parte, I need, we need to revisit that. So procedurally, if there was a, we can revisit our vote, so I need to open that back up. Ex parte for me is, I have a vacation rental, and it was Ex parte for me is, I have a vacation rental and, um, it was inappropriate for me to vote on the TMD. So, I voted on the, on the T-Bid, which was appropriately. So, what I need to do procedurally is, you know, do that ex parte, bring, open that back up. It, it won't change the vote and, as it's explained, but I do have to explain that and officially recuse myself from that, um, discussion. So, procedurally, I just need, it's awkward for me as it is for you, believe me, but it just came to my attention that as a vacation rental owner, I was inappropriately, inappropriate for me to vote on that. So, um, that's my ex parte and I will, um, I think officially, you know, I'm, I need to turn it over to the, the Vice Chair and, or excuse me, the Vice Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, pardon me. And, uh, and then we'll go through that process and, and then I'll come back in the room and we'll move on to the next one. So, I'm going to recuse myself and turn it over to our Mayor Pro Tem.
You're turning your vacation rental over? Is that what's going on? Okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor Irons. So, we'll go ahead and revisit that vote. Does anyone at this point wish to change their vote? No? Okay. Uh, so, uh, at this point, I'll accept that as a four-oh vote for Val Seymour to remain as a representative on the TMD. And I'll close that item and welcome Mayor Irons back. With, with the keys. To the rental.
You did a great job, by the way. Excellent job.
Yeah, just, I think just for clarity though, Mayor Irons, I think you probably just want to be super clear that you refused yourself from the TMD because there is an assessment on the vacation rentals in the countywide system that doesn't happen here in Morro Bay. So, your vacation rental is not assessed as part of the, the T-Bid.
Thanks, thanks for the clarification. It's exactly correct. As a T-Bid, it's, it's only assessed to the hoteliers, not the vacation rentals, but the TMD is assessed to the vacation rental owners, which I should have recused myself. I apologize. Okay, awkward. Okay, thanks. Thanks for that, but good catch anyway. Um, with that, we're moving on to our, our G-PAC, which is our General Plan Advisory Committee. And this is pretty exciting, great field of applicants and I just wanted to thank everyone for turning their application, coming out tonight. We do have thirteen, right, thirteen of fifteen present. And we, so as I spoke earlier, as we opened, we don't have seating enough for all thirteen at the table, but we have mics and then we have one mic sitting on the table. So, um, this is the best we could do for, for the interview process. Hopefully, everybody's, uh, comfortable with it, so we can take everyone at the table and then, you know, take your own seats the way you feel comfortable and then we'll take the, the mic and then we can, if, um, if it's more comfortable, we can either line up at the table over there at the chairs right where Paul and Glenn and Marla's are sitting, or we can just line up everybody in the chairs behind this board here. What's your preference? We could take, would you guys prefer? You, you okay from right there? So, let's take, let's take, um, our applicants at the table and those left over, we'll just have in the chair.
Can they come up to the podium? Can they tell you the podium?
We have a wireless mic.
Yeah, fill those chairs.
Yeah. Yep, that's good. Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to pay more chairs and go around the edge there.
Yeah. Thanks, folks.
This is your first planning test here.
Yeah. That was excellent for everybody there to come up and do that. Thanks. This is going to be great fun.
We have some first test?
The, the, no test, just much fun. Um, so, since everybody's gathered here and kind of the awkwardness of order, I'm just going to go off from the top down on the list of I have here for introductions. Um, I'll start off with a little ex parte. As I, as we discussed earlier, there are two applicants, Bill Woodson and who was it? Red Davis submitted their, um, applications but were unable to attend and submitted, um, letters reflecting that. I did a personal call and, and interview with both of those applicants and I'll disclose what, um, questions I asked at the end of the interviews and just kind of conduct kind of my ex parte there. And, um, are there any other ex parte on the other interviews from the rest of council members as far as the non, the members that, that are not in attendance? It was only myself that did some sort of, uh, interview from Mr. Woodson and Mr. Davis.
I would've said, I would assume so, yeah.
Yeah, so, so you, you contacted them as well?
But I did not interview them formally, just like I contacted everyone else, but I don't know if you want me to go through all the...
Okay, all right. Sure.
Yeah, and it wasn't a formal process.
Okay, great. Thanks. And then, uh, so, let's go through the introductions. Mr. Bouquet, if you can introduce yourself. And before we get, before we get started, um, do we have our, uh, timer going? Are we going to do that, Dana? So, what, because we have such a, a big board, we'll go through introductions and then when we get to questions, we'll have Dana set the clock for a minute and if we can just be concise on our, our question-answer period, then we'll, we'll get through everyone and hopefully that's not too short with everybody. But Rich, please, go through your introduction. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Rich Bouquet. I live at 647 Astero Avenue in Morro Bay. I am a new resident of Morro Bay. We've owned property here for two and a half years. I recently retired from the City of Escondido in Southern California after twenty-three-year career there. Eighteen years of that was as the manager of Neighborhood Services. I oversaw a staff of five and a budget of $2 million a year. And, uh, the biggest, uh, part of that that I did, I think is, is pertinent to the G-PAC selection tonight is that, uh, we organized neighborhood groups. The City of Escondido was a hundred and forty thousand people. I, uh, organized sixteen neighborhood groups, represented, uh, over three thousand households in the city and, uh, we work with them on a monthly basis, getting them to work together and work with council. So, I have a lot of experience with, uh, bringing people to consensus. I, uh, oversaw the CDBG budget in my position and as part of that, every five years, we had to prepare and submit to HUD a consolidated plan on how we would spend that money over the next five years. So, I've done that, uh, for five different ti, four different times. Other than that, uh, we're, I'm a retired here and, and love the town and, uh, excited to go to work. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. And next is Jim Costanzo.
My name's James Costanzo. I'm a resident here of Morro Bay.
Is that okay?
And I've been a resident on and off since, for about thirty-five years, I would say. I'm a retired business owner. I sold my business. Was actually in, based in Templeton and after doing that, we moved back here to Morro Bay, raising two children. Love the Morro Bay.
Great, thanks, Jim. And, uh, Robert Davis is unable to attend and then Jan Goldman.
Good evening. My name is Jan Goldman. I've been in Morro Bay for eight years now. Uh, before I moved here, my, I lived in LA where I was a special ed teacher and my emphasis there was on behavioral management and developmental delayed people. And now I, between ages of five and nine, so now I'm more associated with adults, which I don't know if that's better or worse. But anyway, since I've been in Morro Bay, I've been involved in a lot of things, uh, besides working at the Visitor Center. I'm on the Friends of the Library Board. I, uh, am a docent at the museum. I do, uh, peer counseling through Wilshire Health Foundation and what else do I do? And, um, I don't know. It seems like I'm everywhere. I know a lot of people. I talk to a lot of people and, uh, people expect me to have answers to some of their questions. So, I'm excited to find out about somehow these things work and, um, I have a lot of ideas that I would like to see in Morro Bay and I would love to be part of the general plan to work on these.
Thank you. And next is Paul Nagy.
Hi, I'm Paul Nagy. I'm one of the group that's not living in Morro Bay at the current time, but I am building a home here. We sold our home and moved to Cambria for a short time, but, uh, I have some experience with this, uh, general plan and coastal plan through my, uh, time on the, on the Planning Commission and, uh, in studying that, learned a lot and, and enjoy it. And, of course, love living in Morro Bay and, and I would like to be a part of, uh, guiding it through this, these next changes. Thanks.
Great, Paul. Thank you. Uh, next is Kathy Novak. Welcome.
Good evening, Kathy Novak. I have a, quite a diverse background, but to hit the highlights, I've been involved in commercial fishing for a number of years, former city council member, former mayor. Then I started a planning consulting business back in the late eighties, or excuse me, the late nineties, helped the fishing industry in a lot of issues and then have continued throughout doing this business in Morro Bay. So, you see me frequently before the Planning Commission and the City Council, so I know that you're all familiar with me. Uh, I've also served on a lot of number of numerous boards in the community, so I enjoy being community service. I think I can bring a lot to this committee because of my knowledge and my prior experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And next would be Christine Rogers.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Christine Rogers. I've been a resident of Morro Bay for twelve years and for probably ten of that, I've partnered with the city in some capacity as the Housing Programs Coordinator or through the Energy Watch Partnership, uh, through the U.S. Green Building Council and more recently through the Economic Vitality Corporation, through the Economic Strategy. But this is the first time that I have personally wanted to participate in something. It's really because I believe that the breadth of my life experience, my professional experience, really has something to offer in bringing balance to this, as well as, uh, participating on the California Studentship Network and the California Economic Summit and having kind of a broader understanding of some of the resources and some of the issues that other regions are having with some of the, the, these things. Thank you.
Great, Christine. Thank you. And next would be Susan Schneider.
Hello again. Okay, hello again. I'm Susan Schneider, still, um, and, uh, I, I'm a member of the Finance, the Finance Advisory Committee, among other things. Most of my, most of my background, most of my, my professional background has been in, um, in energy and economics. I have, um, most of the, I, I work mostly with renewable energy projects and the essence of developing those kind of projects is long-term economic and, and environmental sustainability. So, I would really want to emphasize those issues, obviously, on, on the, on this group. Key to, key and, and to, to achieving those objectives is, um, water, use of water. And I think that will also, obviously, given the prominence and, uh, of that and the potential that that could be a long-term condition here, um, that will be key in, in what we put together here. So, I think the, the main thing is, is, the main thing this group is going to have to do is have the imagination to really look long-term. Um, this, uh, this, the plan obviously has not been updated for a very, very long time and it's, takes a little bit of imagination and thinking outside the box to really figure, think about all the things that could happen in that time and put together a plan that will stand the test of time, maybe with some adjustments throughout. But, um, I really look forward to working with the other members of the group to do some brainstorming on that and, uh, looking at the, the environmental, the economic and the, and the, uh, the business, um, aspects of, of a balanced plan.
Thank you, Susan. And congratulations on that financial...
Thank you.
Next would be Glenn Silaway.
Hi, my name is Glenn Silaway. I'm a resident of Morro Bay for the last eleven and a half years or so. I have been active in a lot of groups in Morro Bay, uh, currently on the Board of the Historical Society and, uh, the Morro Bay Bird Festival. I'm working with, uh, the LEAP Green Belt Committee that, uh, NOAA is chairing to try to put some order on our open space, uh, planning. I'm very interested in this committee because it is an opportunity for us to make a bridge to our future and we have, um, got to bring somehow, um, a vision, a big plan and also boil it down to the little details. And I think it's going to be a long, uh, process, one that's going to take a lot of public input. I'm glad to hear there's going to be sixteen public workshops. I think that's what I heard. That's going to be important in this process and something that we're going to need to bring into, uh, our deliberations. My background is I'm a political scientist by training. I've been an internet marketer on my own for the last fifteen years, but before that, I was a policy analyst, uh, at the state level in Minnesota. I've participated in writing legislation and I know that, uh, there's, there's going to be a balancing act in putting together how, uh, prescriptive what we write can be and yet leave room for, uh, judicious choices to be made. Uh, this plan is going to be shaping that next fifty years and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Great, Glenn. Thank you. Stuart Skiff.
I'm Stuart Skiff. I'm currently a member of the P-WAB Board and, uh, before that, uh, I moved here about four years ago. I have served previously with the City of Folsom when it was only actually thirteen thousand people and of that, three thousand of them were prisoners. And, uh, a lot was changing then like it is in Morro Bay right now. And, uh, I was, I showed up at many of the council meetings and raised my hand and they said, "Okay, you're a part of planning." So, I got involved in a, in a project called Vision Two Thousand and we looked ahead from then to the year two thousand and said, "Where do we want it to be in the year two thousand? Where do we want it, where do we want traffic? Who do we want to, what do we want to do to firm our economic base in the city?" And so on. Uh, I was chairman of the Traffic Circulation Committee at that time. Uh, we met, uh, monthly. We had many, many meetings and the, uh, Folsom is now currently, and I don't want to scare anybody, but it's currently about seventy-eight thousand people. And, uh, our recommendations were for the most part taken and they, uh, they did, some developers did change some things in there, but it, it turned out very, very well for the city. We did encourage and, and obtain intel, moved their home offices to Folsom. So, they moved thirteen thousand engineers to Folsom. And I'm currently, I do software engineering and, uh, I still am active doing that and the, I'd love to serve on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Next is Melanie Smith.
Thanks. I'm Melanie Smith. I am one of the two that are not currently full-time resident of Morro Bay. I actually, um, five years ago, my husband and I bought a house here at, uh, you can throw a rock and hit the house, actually. It's at Hillcrest up in the Harbor Track. Um, so, I've been coming to the central coast my whole life. Uh, my parents had property and still have property at Lake Nausicaä. So, I've seen the central coast really change. Um, there were no wineries, you know, when I was a little kid coming up here and, and it was very different, the whole area was very different. Um, and, but it's home for me as much as Southern California is home for me. And, um, so taking that step of, of, of buying a home here and, and, you know, coming up, we try to be here once a month and this is a great reason to be here, um, a little bit more. So, it's, it's, it's an exciting opportunity, but, um, as much as all that, um, I'm a practicing urban planner. I have my own firm in downtown Los Angeles. I, um, and I've been there eleven years and I've been practicing planning for about sixteen. Um, I started out at the, uh, doing general plans, uh, specific plans, um, and, uh, writing them and, uh, conducting the community outreach and, um, I, my work is more in urban design now and it's probably, um, finer grain, uh, more site-specific now. But, um, I understand the importance of this. I think this is a really important time for the city and I actually had reached out, I don't know if this is ex parte, but I had reached out to Mayor Irons and, and Councilman Smucker a while back. I, I didn't really know this, this was even, um, on the horizon to suggest that they take a look at a project that's happening in Southern California relating to, to a waterfront and, um, just really felt strongly that, that there's a lot at stake right now in terms of how, um, the city moves forward and the opportunities that, that, that are, that are sitting there for it and in amazing, this amazing natural setting, um, that we have here. So, um, it's a great opportunity and I'm, I'd love to be able to participate.
Great, Melanie. Thank you. Uh, next Susan Stewart.
Good evening. My name is Susan Stewart. I think most of you know me and a little bit about me, but I'll share some things. I have degrees in anthropology and early childhood education. I moved to Morro Bay in 1988. My two kids were born and raised here. So I had the two kids, then I had a divorce. I got work as a house painter and as an archaeologist, so I spent about 10 years doing archaeology. I'd like to say I kind of know development from the underground all the way up to the roof, because I've done it. Bought the business I have on Morro Bay Boulevard now in 2006. It's very successful. I think my biggest concerns are having a voice for small businesses in this process, sustainability, cultural and historic preservation. I also think it's really important to support and protect the fishing industry and other local traditional agricultural industries. When I was teaching preschool, I was head teacher in a very large state preschool. We did a lot with consensus building, had a staff of 12, didn't have any problem running hour-long meetings and getting a lot done. One of the things that you may know too, Jan, from working with kids, active listening is important, and so are logical consequences. And I think there's some very powerful people here with a lot of great experience, but I think some of those skills can also be helpful. I was on the Promotions Committee as a member and as Chair. I've been on the Chamber and Merchants Boards. We had an Economic Development Committee that was fairly active for a number of years. I was on that. And I'm participating in the LEAP program. So I guess that's probably enough, a little bit of stuff. Again, I think part of what this group is going to be doing, is my understanding, is hiring a consultant to actually write the document. That's not what our group will be doing, but we will be overseeing it and making sure that what we do moving into the future is keeping the character of Morro Bay, what we love about it, and make it a place that hopefully my children can move back to, because they can both have jobs here and afford to live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Dr. Teft.
It's a tiny little switch. Yes, my name is Bob Taft. I professionally, I spent 35 years as the Medical Director of a Level III Neonatal Intensive Care Unit in the Los Angeles area. So I can relate to Melanie's experience of living in Morro Bay and working in Los Angeles. And so that's kind of like a tiny little city with tiny little residents. And as of July of last year, I'm now living here full-time and no longer practicing medicine. So in terms of experience, I've spent four years on the Morro Bay Planning Commission, though they weren't all continuous. I spent about 18 years on the Airport Land Use Commission of San Luis Obispo County, and was very intimately, much more intimately involved with writing the current Airport Land Use Plan than I would have liked to have been, since that was done with no consultant and no budget. In terms of the process before us, I think, number one, it's very important that we move forward with a master plan that's based on consensus, on a real consensus of the citizens, and that recognizes the uniqueness of the different neighborhoods and the different communities within Morro Bay. I think my sort of, what I'd like to see is a plan that has unifying principles, but which, in terms of specifics, really is tailored to each of the individual neighborhoods that make up the city of Morro Bay.
Great, Dr. Teft, thank you. And Jim Vosler.
Yeah, my name is Jim Vosler. I, nine-year resident of Morro Bay. I am educated in fine arts, that's what I got my bachelor's degree in. And if you'd have asked me then what I do now, I probably would have laughed at you. But I, for the last 15 years, I've been doing insurance claims. And for the last nine years, for the last nine years, I've been doing public entity claims. And that has given me a familiarity with city operations systems that has also brought about an interest in how city government works and what can be done with city government and through city government. My interest in the GPAC is, has a lot to do with my feelings about this particular community and its unique characteristics, and where we are situated off of the 101 Corridor, on the California coast, in a situation that is very much like the way California used to be in most places. I've always, I'm a lifetime resident of California, and I've seen a lot of changes in a lot of different communities up and down the coast. In the Bay Area, I've lived up there. I went to high school in the Bay Area, graduated up there in 1968, and then came down to Thousand Oaks and went to California Lutheran University, where Thousand Oaks, at the time, was a town of about 15,000 people. I lived there for 22 years and saw it turn into a town of over 200,000 people. And those kinds of changes were almost too much too fast to me. And I did leave the area and began, I went up and lived in Oregon for a number of years, but I couldn't take the winters up there, so I came back to California. Started thinking about where I wanted to be in California when I came back. I ended up back in Thousand Oaks at first, but as I started coming up this, I started looking in this direction and found this area. And I think we have something here that is very, very unique. And though growth is a big issue for the future, I think preservation of an environment here that is very unique is also important to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Vosler. And that concludes our introductions. For, I mean, I'm just looking at the list, I just wanted to make sure, I think the last one on there was Bill Woodson, and he's not here, and neither is Mr. Davis. So with that, we can start with questions. And Scott, hate to put you on the spot, I didn't get the chance to talk to you about this ahead of time. Do you have any opening remarks and kind of, you know, your thoughts on the general plan update and process-wise, and just some general comments on duties and roles and things like that?
Well, I mean, as far as, you know, where we sit right now with the process, we, I've preliminarily put together the RFP. We're kind of waiting on a few pieces of it. We have some grant applications that we're working on, grant agreements specifically that we're working on, that I need to solidify and get finished before we can send out the RFP. We had a consultant prepare what we called the Plan for the Plan. It was kind of to define, you know, what we were going to have in the RFP. So that was a pretty nice process and pretty comprehensive. So we have a really good idea about what's going to be included in the process, and what's going to be included in the general plan update. And it's pretty specific, you know, as far as what the expectation is coming back. We've been working really closely with the council right now and coming up with a budget, and we're solidifying budget numbers right now. So because we're doing that, it gives me a different opportunity as far as releasing the RFP, insofar as I can identify at least the, you know, upfront funding sources, as opposed to sending it out there without that in there. So that'll actually lend itself very nicely into the process, and probably result in us getting some really good responses back, as far as scope and things go. I think once, you know, once we do send it out, you know, it'll be the General Plan Advisory Committee that'll be reviewing the RFPs and choosing, hoping to choose the consultant. I think that's going to be a pretty exciting process for the group. So I think that's kind of where we are in the process right now, and I would anticipate we'll be releasing the RFP within the next couple of weeks.
Great, Scott, thanks for that.
Sure.
Scott's our Community Development Director, if you all didn't know that. So thanks, Scott. And so we can start off with questions, and I'm going to just start by way of the list in which we did introductions. Forgive me since it's, you know, pretty easy for me to just go by. And maybe Noah, if you want to start off with questions, we can start from your direction and work to the other end of the table.
Okay.
And I think, Dana, you have some, you're going to be assisting us. Okay, great. And so, yeah, we'll try to keep it down to a minute.
I'll try to ask a one-minute question. Actually, this may seem somewhat simplistic, but we are looking at a very diverse array of needs and backgrounds that we're, that need to come to the table on this. And some of the things that we've talked about with staff and as a council, areas of interest, obviously, the general plan has those items broken out. But also, we did talk about specifics, and I'm going to list these, and I'd like you to think about these individually. And if you had to identify one that you relate to the most, provide that to us as a way to help us maybe look at how we're balancing the committee. So first is land use and circulation. The second is economic and business districts. Third is tourism. Fourth is waterfront. Fifth is conservation and environment. Sixth is neighborhoods and design. And the last is facilities and safety. And I removed the high school item, which is a little different. So feel free to ask me if you'd like me to relist those again. But if one really jumped out to you and you feel strongly about that, that would be your answer. Okay, I'll say it one more time. Land use and circulation, economic and business districts, tourism, waterfront, conservation and environment, neighborhoods and design, facilities and safety.
Okay, so we barely kept that underneath a minute. And
I'm counting on that to make it up.
Thank you. And so I'll just start from the top of the list, which is Rich, and then as we go through these questions, I'll try to pick another point, so I'm not always starting with you, Rich. But if you can lead us off on that, I'll go down this list. Thank you.
That's easy. Neighborhoods and design.
Okay. You want to, are you okay with that?
Please, yeah.
Okay, good. And then next would be James Costanzo.
Yes, Business and Development, Land Use.
Okay, great. Jan Goldman.
The ones that caught my attention right away, I liked all of them, but especially the first one, the land use, and the general economic for the two.
Okay, great. Paul Nagy.
Mine would be land use and neighborhood design.
And Kathy Novak.
Waterfront and land use.
And Christine Rogers.
Land use and circulation and economic.
Okay, and Susan Schneider.
Conservation, economic, and probably secondarily, the neighborhood and design.
Okay. And Glenn Silaway.
Conservation and waterfront.
Stuart Skiff.
Land use and circulation and neighborhood design.
And Melanie Smith.
Tough to pick. Land use and circulation, conservation and environment, neighborhood and design, I don't know. Waterfront, any of the above.
Okay. Got it under one minute. Susan Stewart.
This is tough. I'm going to say economic and business districts, but also tourism, partly because it hasn't been said, and I think it's important. Quick question, these are things with your general plan, the LCP is also part of this. Local coastal plan also includes cultural resources, archaeology, historical resources. Those things are really important to me in terms of, again, sustaining the character of our community.
Great, thanks. And Dr. Teft.
I think that, I think that land use and circulation sort of sets the stage for the other one, so that would have to be number one. And then I suppose neighborhood and design, number two, because it's so directly related to the planning process.
Okay, Mr. Vosler.
Well, I would, I would look at three, land use and circulation, conservation and environment, and facilities and safety.
Great. Thanks for that. Thanks for the question, and we got through that quickly, Noah. All right, good. And John? Yeah.
Testing one, two. Can you hear me okay? Everybody good? Okay. So we're in the process of developing really what I'll call a plan. And a plan has specifically objectives with measurable goals and outcomes that are very important in terms of accountability. But the driver of the plan is really the mission, vision, and values of the community. So in one minute or less, can you give me, in your own words, what you believe is the vision for Morro Bay?
And I'm just picking, throwing a dart at the list, so I've got it for the, Christine Rogers, would you start off on that? Great, thank you.
So, you know, the general plan, what it really does is it equips the council with the ability to allocate resources and policy towards the goals that this community has. And in doing that, I think it's important also to look at some of the things that are mandated to the city to address, and how do we align with those so that we can leverage those resources through grant dollars and through some of, you know, some of the additional assistance that we can get. But as far as the mission for Morro Bay, I think really, it, our character, I love this community, it's my home, and it's our character that is the most important. And then how do we strategically build upon that so that we meet the needs of our community, so that we have jobs for our households, so that they can meet their own needs, so that we can capitalize on the economic opportunities that come, so that we really, we take what we have here and we build upon it in a way that will make us sustainable, both economically and in protecting our natural resources and that tourism value. And really, you know, how do we build upon our character in ways that make sense and will sustain us into the future?
Thank you, Christine. And Susan Schneider.
Okay. I would say that the mission, vision, values should, could be boiled down into smart and balanced, balanced preservation and growth. And smart because there are going to be trade-offs that'll have to be made, and we're going to have to decide really what are the, to prioritize in those, in that exercise. Balanced, balancing mainly as the preservation and the growth. I think the preservation of the unique character of this town is extremely important, and that's why people moved here in the first place, that's why people come here. I think allowing for some growth is something that is important for economic sustainability and, but has to be done in a way that also preserves. So I would take things in that order, smart and balanced, preservation and growth. And all of those things should be there in the plan when it's finalized.
Thank you, Susan. Glenn Silaway.
I think of Morro Bay, I think of the place itself. And I'm looking at this planning process as place-making, in a sense. And that would be, mean, making a place where people can interact, expressing their values, consistent with tradition, but enabling us to go into a future with a sustainable community. I chose waterfront and environment because those places trigger to me the key elements that make this a special place that it is. And I have a strong interest in maintaining those environments consistent with smart growth and reasonable growth. We can't be excluding everybody all the time, we can't not have improvements and changes, but they need to be directed in a way that preserves those core values that I think we all share about maintaining this environment as a special place that we came to for this reason.
Thank you, Glenn. Stewart? Stuart Skiff.
My vision for Morro Bay. We seem to be going through boom and bust cycles here. And I believe the reason why we're going through boom and bust is we don't have a good enough foundation in business. a good enough foundation in, in business. And that means fishing, it also means soliciting other types of businesses, perhaps high-tech, through installing fiber optics in, in Morro Bay, so we can attract some companies like MindBody and some of these others to level out our economy here. I would like to see the, the way of life here preserved as much as we can. And by doing so, I believe we would need to talk to Chevron, talk to some other entities around us that may be annexed some of it, so that we have some input in what they're doing here in town. And a, build a good foundation so that we can look forward 20 years and see that, yeah, you can look back and say, we did that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Melanie Smith?
I would say that a key part of, of vision is inclusivity. So it's, it's great to hear all of our visions, and this is a really smart group, you know, to tell. But without the community at the table at large, it's, you know, it's just a start. But, but my vision, I, you know, I guess if I think of a metaphor, I think of a healthy ecosystem. I think this is a really complex place, and the stakes are high, in, in the sense that it's, it's a, it's a constrained environment. It is not an unfettered environment that we're in. And so I think that a healthy ecosystem has, you know, it's got physical health, it has, you know, it has an economic balance, it has social health, you know, the organisms are all interacting well together and success, towards successful outcomes. And so I just, I think the complexity of an ecosystem and a, you know, in a watershed, those kinds of metaphors are what, what my vision for, for Morro Bay is.
Thank you, Melanie. Susan Stewart?
Thank you. I like that little bell. It's good. It's an interesting one. I'm a person who is very slow to change. People who know me would agree and laugh about that. But I like smart change. I like smart growth. I think in Morro Bay, what we're going to be looking at is growing deeper rather than broader. So I think we need to look at how we can be sustainable with who we are as a community that has its own fire department, has its own police department, has its own planning department, has a business community that at times struggles. But I think there's some real smart growth we could look at with that, where new industries sustain the ones that are here. So expanding on the fishing industry with the kinds of support businesses that could go along with that. People love this town. I love this town. The, my visitors to my store love the town as it is, and I wouldn't want to see it change too much.
Thank you, Susan. And Dr. Teft?
Well, I think, I think that my vision is for vitality. I'd like to see a vitality and an energy in our downtown and along our Embarcadero. But I'd also, I think, also to sustain, to sustain the environment, to sustain our fishing industry, and to sustain whatever that character is that brought all of us here. It's hard to define, but you all know what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Dr. Teft. Mr. Bosler?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, conservation and, and the environment that we have here is sort of a fairly obvious one, you know? I think it has everything to do with what attracts people to this area and, and the issue of tourism. But I, I like the comment about a, a growth that is maybe deeper rather than broader, so that it, it's not something that maybe is looked at in the future as something that sprawls, but something that, that establishes a, a type of growth that maybe encourages industry that will keep our kids here, as well as be a destination for people to retire, people to live in their, in their middle years. Clean industry, I think, would be something that would be really interesting to try to attract to this region. And, and, and smart growth, I think, is a, is a, I think that's a good guiding principle.
Great, thank you. And Rich Bouquet?
I heard both mission and vision, and I think John asked for mission. I, I would hope that we, like everyone else, that I echo, that maintaining the integrity of, of the, the character of Morro Bay, that's what attracted my wife and I here. The friendliness, the honesty, the openness of the people that welcomed us here, the, the feeling that you can walk at night and, and go anywhere in the city and not feel afraid, the feeling that you can walk through town and see people leaving stuff out overnight, it's still there the next day. All those things that are just, you can't put a price on any of that stuff. But we have to put this general plan together that's going to protect that and also give clear direction from both staff and citizenry when they work with the city to know what's expected from both sides and that, and we're all in this together. This is a partnership, and we need to work together to protect everything that we've all said tonight about Morro Bay.
Thanks, Rich. James Costanzo?
Yeah, and I think it is why everybody was here, because we always love Morro Bay. And we want to keep Morro Bay as it is, but we can't be stagnant. So we have to have a plan for growth, and I think we need smart growth and utilize what we have currently in the city and utilize that for, for, to attract business and to grow in a, in a smart way. I think we are all considered, can, can work together to achieve that.
Great, James. Thank you. Jan Goldman?
Thank you. I also, I have to echo everybody's comments about preserving the character of Morro Bay and the, the welcoming of it and the peacefulness of the town. That's what attracted me. When, with all the tourists that I talk to at the visitor's center, that's what attracts them, along with the outside activities. And so I would like to, I think we need to maintain that. That's a good identity of the town. We need to somehow incorporate that or enlarge on that as we grow, because, again, we can't be stagnant. We have to have more growth and, for the people that live here, too, not just the tourists who come, but the people who live here, need to have, find, be able to find the services they need. And I think that we need to work on combining downtown with the Embarcadero. Right now, they're two separate places, and somehow there has to be a way to get people to circulate to both of them. So I think when I said before, that's it.
Jan, we're waiting for those, those.
Next question, next question.
Thanks, Jan, appreciate that. And then Paul Nagy?
Thank you. I think our, the mission of this, of this would be to have the vision for our future, because that's what we're doing, really. We're writing the future of the, the path Morro Bay is going to take. We need to protect our environment. We need to preserve the character, while at the same time, we need to be able to live in the present and move into the future. We can't plan to stay the same. We need to be proactive about all these issues and meet the needs of our community for the future. Like, for example, land use changes could, could help our housing needs.
Thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Kathy Novak?
Thank you. Well, the term may be all but quality of life, because I think that sums up a lot of it. We also need to continue to support our commercial fishing heritage, because that's how this town, a town was founded and how it grew, and it was such an important industry, so it's a big part of us, and we need to continue that. We need to have viability as, as it relates to services for the community, continue to have fire or police services and et cetera, so that's economic stability. The other thing that I want to mention as far as the conservation things go, Morro Bay is very unique. Morro Bay, we've got the Pacific Ocean on one side of us, so our town can't grow out that way. We've got state parks on the other south side of us, so we can't grow out that way. We also have a large area around our city limits that's been put in conservation, conservation easements have been put into perpetuity, so our city boundaries can't expand that way. So we really need to look within ourselves here, what we've got within town, so that we can accommodate the things that we need. So it's going to be locally here within town.
Thanks, Kathy. Perfect. This is, this is great. Everybody, great, great job. My, my question involves, so this advisory committee will be working through many workshops. And so my question would be with, through all that, there's community input that's going to be provided to all of you, and throughout the process, your input and then community input that comes in through the workshops. So how do you, how will you help understanding those differing perspectives and come to some sort of compromising solution? And is there? So just, it's, it's an open question, and I will start with Stuart Skiff, if you'll start us off on that.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a few of those workshops that you've already put on here, and I, I think the format that you had in those was very good, in that you solicited comments from people attending the workshop. You wrote it down on the little thing, and then we ranked them according to what they were, and then we talked about them. I think that type of a, of approach to community workshops is, is very good, and something could be followed. We also need to engage the public here. And they, there, there seems to be some apathy in town and walking around, and I walk all over town, on, well, they're going to do what they're going to do. And, you know, you, somehow we need to reach out, get their email addresses, get them into these workshops, and, and get some ideas on what's important to them. And I'm sure there's a consensus out there, we just need to draw it out and sit down and work with it, within the parameters of, of course, the coastal commission and the general plan that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Melanie Smith?
So I've worn a lot of different hats in these processes. As, as I've said, I'm a consultant, but I've also was a planning commissioner for seven years in the city of Long Beach, and I lived there for 25 years. And, 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 you know, I've certainly been a participant in a lot of these processes, too, and designed them. You know, I would first say it's, it's, and it's something my neighbor already actually sort of said, it's related anyways. You know, it's about listening. It's really about very, very actively listening to people. And it's about trying to understand really where they're coming from and what their perspective is, and then trying to process that. And, and, you know, I'm a firm believer always in the third way. I guess I'm always looking for the third way. So I don't, I'm not an either-or person, I'm a both-and kind of person when I can be. You've got to find ways, you know, of accommodating different perspectives and finding common ground. That's what these processes are all about. It's not easy, but that's just what I think we need to do. And we may need to go to them and not have them come to us. That's another key part of this.
Great, Melanie, thanks. Susan Stewart?
I like what she said. Yeah, absolutely agree with, with finding common ground. Active listening involves not only hearing, which means you have to be quiet and you have to hear what people are saying, but feeding it back to them, interpreting what they're saying with how it fits in the, the perspective of, of what we're doing. And I also really like the idea that sometimes maybe calling people into the meetings isn't going to get everybody connected. So whether we do some kind of outreach where we have little community meetings in somebody's home, you know, kind of like when you're doing an election thing and you have a coffee at somebody's house, and you invite the neighborhoods in that way. I could see a lot of my business community, they don't come to these evening meetings, you know? They've worked all day, they're worn out. But there are ways that we can find to get to them through the different organizations. Because it is a, a dynamic community that's made up of a lot of different parts, and I, I think it's important to reach them.
Great, Susan, thanks. So with the community input and the differing perspectives, we're, you know, how we get to compromising solutions and results, and, and those are great answers. Dr. Teft?
Well, to me, I think, to me, the key to, to reaching consensus or compromise is respect. I think people have to know that their opinions are respected. I think that you need to get past emotion. I think a lot of times people will approach this process with fear or anger, and you need to get past that and find out what people's really core values are, and then find out what maybe is not so core, what maybe they can, they can live with. So, but, but again, I think the real, the real key is to genuinely respect the input that you're getting.
Great, Dr. Teft, thanks. Mr. Bosler?
Well, I'm going to repeat what the Dr. Teft just said, really.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. In my, in my work in claims, I'm usually telling people when I first meet them that you really don't want to see me coming, because it means there's a problem. But we're there to work out solutions. And I've found, in my experience, in doing that and, and, and getting those solutions, is that respect is the key way to approach.
Great, thanks. Rich Bouquet?
In my work, in my career, in neighborhood work and neighborhood organizing, one of the things that we realized early on was that the work we did, meeting with people on a one-on-one basis in their homes, et cetera, was not efficient work, but it was very effective. So I think we need to approach this whole process like that, knowing that the outcome would be much more beneficial for the city. And when we talk about 50 years and longer and, and the more global look at what, where we're headed with the city, is that if we're able to, in this process that we would be doing in the next three years, able to establish relationships with people, like it's been said, as far as respect. But if we're able to effectively communicate in both directions, and we could serve as the conduit for the, the city to the citizens and back this way, that will get people that will buy in, I think, and be more willing to work with us. I heard my noise.
Okay. Thanks, Rich. James Costanzo?
Yeah, I think listening is key, but you can also integrate different ideas into the general plan, and not just focus on one, but look at a broad picture, and how do we integrate all that we need to do to move from Morro Bay forward?
Thank you, James. And Jan Goldman?
Listening, like everybody else, is active listening. I've been to some of the workshops, which I think are really good. And I've gone to several city council meetings and all this. And I notice it's always the same people. But there are a lot of people I talk to outside of the meetings who definitely have opinions. They just don't want to go to a meeting and talk about them. So those people are just as important to listen to and to understand what they want. And somehow, through talking about it and respecting their point of view, hopefully we can come to a consensus that most people, find out what most people have in common, the common thing, and work from there. And that's all, I guess.
Thanks, Jan. Paul Nagy?
Thanks. I, I try not to have a preconceived opinions before we get together and talk about things. And learning from other people will help me, guide me to getting a, what I feel will be the right opinion. So that political give and take, I think, that people share and, and back and forth, rights the ship down the middle.
Great, Paul, thanks. And Kathy Novak?
In the 30-plus years that I've been here, I've seen many times where different, diverse groups in this community have come together for, for some sort of an action. When it comes to the community, there's the heart, and people will work it out. I think what we're looking at with the general plan is we're looking at broad-based goals that we're developing. We're not getting into the specifics, which would be in the implementation programs like the zoning ordinance. So when you stand at a higher level and you're talking about general policies, then I think you're going to collectively get more community members that are going to agree. And I think there's a lot of people in the community that agree a lot more than people really want to say, too.
Thanks, Kathy. Christine Rogers?
I think acknowledging that all of those needs are important and trying to set expectations. When you're working with limited resources, a limited amount of space, there's going to be overlap, and you're going to have to meet multiple needs there. And, and disclosure as well, so that everyone can see, well, this was the most critical need, this was where we had the ability to meet the needs of, of most of our residents, and leaving those other things on the table for potential future discussions, or we can revisit this and see if there's some innovative ways that we can identify assistance or resources that can help meet those other needs.
Great, thank you, Christine. Great, thank you, Christine. And Susan Schneider.
Last but not least, I think there's, oh, you're, I'm sorry. Good. So, I think there, there are two main things to, to keep in mind. One of them is the communication. This is only a long process, a three-year process. People are busy and I think it's going to be really important to get out and use the Bay News, use the Newcomers Club, all of the organizations that are in town, so people understand what the real, the comment opportunities are and where they can best, if they're going to have, be, get involved in some limited way, what's the best way for them to get involved and how can they best communicate? Emails, even things like that. We need to look at all the communication, the communication avenues that are available and make sure people understand the process, the larger process. I think having people prioritize themselves on what's most important and seeing if we can reflect that. And where we have to say no, I mean, sometimes you have to, you do try and find things in common, sometimes you can't satisfy everyone, but where you have to say no, following up with people and explaining what the reason was, that maybe that need wasn't met and looking for other ways to do it in the future, but giving people, giving people that, that respect to, to follow up with them and explain.
Great, Susan, thanks. And Glenn Silaway.
You know, this is going to be a very long process. I, I really like the comments people have made about active outreach and treating some aspect of this almost as we have a marketing issue in front of us because we need to educate people about what we're doing. And it seems to me that because we have so many workshops set up, there's going to be a sequence. So, there's going to be, we're going to have to be clear about where we are and what we have yet to do and then put that into some codified form and put it out through the educational mechanism so people can learn with us as we go. Because this process is going to be so long and so complicated, so difficult, that if we're not consistently trying to communicate that clearly to people through, people have talked about a lot of channels and I, I support that, I think we need to be active that way. And then, when we get feedback from them, it's going to be more focused and, and we can listen and get more out of it. So, it's partly on us to be putting out things that they can react to.
Great, Glenn, thank you. And then, well, that concludes our questions for that one and then we'll turn, turn it over to Matt for your question.
Sure.
And we'll start off with Dr. Teft.
All right. Here you go. So, it's been, gosh, 12, 26 years since we've had a general plan update. With that, we've managed to survive. So, how will an updated plan move the city forward?
Well, number one, an updated plan is going to give us a coherent roadmap forward. The, the city moves forward now by struggling. I mean, our current, our current codes are many times vague and that sets up a situation which is inherently unfair to different people. So, I, I think that, I think that we're moving forward now, you know, at about two knots. Hopefully, the, having a coherent plan will, will actually give people a roadmap and allow the city to move forward much more fluidly than it is at the moment.
And Mr. Vossler.
I think an updated city plan, oh, I'm sorry, forgetting the microphone. I think an updated city plan is basically what's going to engage the community. It's going to, just that, the process itself is, is, I think, exciting enough in terms of its potential that it, it, I think it benefits the community as a whole, you know? I, I, I kind of, I'm thinking in terms of like, here we are at 2015 and we're probably looking at something that is going to have some life going into the middle of the century and it's, it's an interesting challenge. And I would hope that we would, we would engage in a progressive way and I think we, I, I would hope that we would engage in terms of making this something that would be exciting and interesting to our youth.
Thank you, Mr. Vossler. And now, Rich Bouquet.
Came around fast. Again, I'm, I'm new here, but studying the history and listening and watching meetings such, I understand, it has been 26 years, but I understand we were close and then it kind of fell apart. I think the most important thing, well, the general plan is, is very important. Dr. Teft just really summed it up perfectly in my mind, but I think also for the citizens of Morro Bay that we really can do it. We're going to be the little engine that can in this group and we're going to get this thing done and we're going to follow through and see it through fruition and implement the plan and give the residents clear direction and guidance for the, for the future.
Great, Rich, thank you. James Costanzo.
Yes, I think we need a clear plan to set a direction for the city to follow. So, when we have opportunities come up, we have a direction to direct them to, we have a plan to say, yep, this is a good opportunity, we have assets available to do this, so, just to give a clear plan for the city to follow, you know, to move forward. Thank you.
Great, James. Jan Goldman.
I think the way, I think that having a new updated plan will invigorate people and excite them more about the development of their community, they'll feel more like they have a voice in it. Right now, I think people think, well, that's just the way it is and they don't really know what's going on. And just so that you can help create the identity and maintain the character of this community as we go forward, it will just be good to kickstart some of these things back into action and to help the city maintain its character and its ideals.
Great, Jan, thank you. And Paul Nagy.
Thanks. I think updating our plan will help us move forward by using intelligent guidance. I think it will protect our environment and protect our character. I think it'll allow for smart growth and I think it'll help us meet our needs of the community to allow for, oh, all our future needs.
Okay, Paul, thanks. Got it all out there, thank you. Kathy, Kathy Novak.
Right now, and I, Dr. Teft hit, hit on this too, but we've got inconsistent policies. We have gray areas, we have way too much information, we have dedicated several pages in our general plan to the number of slips that are down on the Embarcadero, which is way out of date. So, getting this plan will move the city forward because if we can refresh this information so we can get rid of this, all these things that we don't need and the inconsistencies, which will also allow us to move forward on the implementation documents that we have, excuse me, specifically the zoning ordinance. Because that's also, even though that was approved in the late 90s, it's still old, it's, it's gray and it's inconsistent. So, the best way to move the city forward is if we can get rid of these inconsistencies and try to have one plan going forward. We need to combine the local coastal plan and the general plan. The local coastal plan right now is about a half an inch thick and the general plan's at over an inch thick. So, we've got to get down to one document that we can have all of the policies and then have it flow from that point.
Great, Kathy, thank you. Christine Rogers.
I think that it helps you to communicate to the public your vision for the community, both on the private sector, so they know what types of project and development and programs will be embraced by this community, and also in leveraging state and federal dollars so that they know that this, it's a current plan, it has community support, the projects moving forward in the future are going to follow along that pathway and their money would be well invested in the future.
Thanks, Christine. And Susan Schneider.
Yeah, I think the, the general plan is, is a way to set priorities so that not only can we take advantage of opportunities, but maybe we would be able to create some of those opportunities or think of some of those ourselves. I think the resources we have are scarce resources and it gives us some idea of the direction, or the direction and the use for those resources. I, I was reading something that, the other day, that talked about California is largely empty central coast and we're, we're not an empty central coast, but this will, a general plan gives us a, maybe a coherent message and a coherent vision for not only people who live here, but people who might be interested in this area and might want to move here or visit.
Thank you, Susan. Glenn Silaway.
I think, Matt, you asked, how will an updated plan move the city forward and I, I guess the first thing that comes to mind is it depends on how good our plan is. But, yeah, better than what we've got, I know that. Right now, we're making decisions on an ad hoc basis. I've seen the council and the planning commission struggle over problems, they have lack of clarity in the current rules. We've got the guidelines that Scott's working on to help with neighborhood compatibility, but one of the key things that this plan would do is give you a framework to say yes or no. And that will help the city move forward more efficiently. I think we've had a lot of ad hoc work done that we can avoid with a better plan and then we don't have to be opportunistic. We don't have to just take whatever comes along because it will provide us with a framework so that we know this range of plans, these opportunities we should seek, this proposed project is one we can say yes or no to.
Thanks, Glenn. And Stuart Skiff.
I've seen the magic that a balanced general plan and an effective one does where I came from and I think we have the same opportunity to do that here in that we have a balanced growth, we have business parks, we have fiber optics, we have other things, they have the tools here to balance our community and maintain our quality of life. I'd love to see North Morro with streets paved and we don't have the budget for it because we don't have enough business or enough income to support that. So, what are we going to do about that? And I think the general plan will give us the tools, if we think it out carefully, to figure out what we're going to do over the long period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Melanie, Melanie Smith, pardon me.
Wasn't sure if it was me or not. So, you're asking a planner why we should plan? My head, my head's exploding, but I'm trying to think of like one thing, one thing to say or a few things to say. You know, I think that we, we all need a plan that, that we can, that is a galvanizing device that people were saying, that can energize everyone, but you need a plan because you need to have this roadmap, you need this, this policy backing to, to be your, your touchstone for making decisions. So, I mean, so we all need a plan, you need a plan. But I think I would go back to something that's also been said about marketing because the plan's old and it looks like it was written on a Selectric typewriter and I think that it, you know, that it probably was, but that's fine, but it, you know, it needs, it can be a marketing tool for the city. It will be a marketing tool for the city. It should be branded from the very beginning, the whole process should be branded. It should, it should take on an identity and it should, should reflect the character. I'm not saying change the character of the city, but I'm saying reflect its best self and embody it in this policy that we can move forward with.
Great, thanks, Melanie. Susan Stewart.
Definitely need to simplify it, bring the two documents together. It is something that should be the foundation for whatever is moving forward. If I look at 28 years ago and that thing was typed on some kind of Selectric's computer and I think about the Star Wars, or Star Trek TV shows and do you remember, the kid had these tablets and he's writing his homework and we're just sitting there going, oh, yeah, right. And it's happening. My dad was in artificial intelligence since the 60s and he would have been amazed to see how far we've come in just the 15 or so years since he died, 20 years now, I guess. But we've come a long way in 28 years and there's a lot of catching up to do on that document, just to make it relevant, just to make it work moving forward, so.
Great, thanks for all those responses and answers. And Christine, with the final question we're all waiting for.
Yeah, I actually have a pretty good one, but thank, but all the other ones, I've already been asked.
Okay, good, maybe, maybe you can direct it to James Costanzo.
Okay. Okay, so, several of you talked about this, so you're teeing it up for me. What I was thinking about what's, well, it's overwhelming to receive all of your applications. Certainly, we, we thought we wanted this, we had no idea anyone would apply, so that's been astonishing and wonderful and thank you so much. So, based on some of the things we've talked about, the reason that I find this exciting is because it's all about the future. And yes, you know, maybe we used typewriters in the past and, you know, yes, you know, we were stalled on maybe something, you know, seven, eight, nine years ago, it doesn't matter now, it's all about the future. So, if you could put on your future hat with me and we just celebrated our 50 years in Morro Bay in 2014. So, if you can travel with me to the year 2064, 50 years from now, and think of yourselves as leading that charge into 2064. And I also find it's very valuable to think about the impact we have on the future and that's what you're doing. So, if you can imagine yourself in 2064, likely we're all going to be there in spirit, likely. What, and let's say that group is turning around and looking at the 50 years that came prior to 2064. What would you like them to thank the G-PAC for in terms of your leadership? What legacy would you like to be recognized in 2064 that you would have helped the city accomplish? So, it doesn't have to be anything elaborate, it can be just a few words, however you envision it, the more creative, the better. Thank you.
Start off with James Costanzo.
Well, thank you for the questions. I would like to say that we turned a corner and we brought Morro Bay into the 21st century and beyond, that we, that we did, we accomplished what we set out to do. We had a clear plan for the city, the city had responsible and economic growth and that we, that we attained what we set out to do.
Great, thank you. Jan Goldman.
I would like to see possibly only pedestrian use on Morro Bay Boulevard from Main Street to Morro Bay Boulevard and down the hill to the Embarcadero and I would like to see those vacant lots have relevant businesses or attractions on them that would be beneficial to the city, well, that are not just souvenir shops or something. And I would also like to see the area where the power, the wastewater plant is right now, redeveloped into something with, with a lot of open space, maybe, maybe more campsites or a little village or something, but something that's, that is related to the business, to the beach and environmentally fine. I don't want to see any high rises, I don't want to see any gated communities. I want everything to be open and people can just move freely and feel safe.
Great, Jan, thanks. Paul Nagy.
Well, let's see, I, I think if I make it another 50 years and I'm able to, to be around with somebody who's saying thank you to us for what we did 50 years ago, I think they'd say, thanks for allowing us, for letting us, telling us what we can do, not what we can't do. And you helped us grow and change in ways that protected the environment and, and protected the, the business and the livelihoods of, of families here so we can all still live here. Thanks.
Great. Kathy Novak.
Well, what I'd like them to look back is that we took on a difficult task where we have a local coastal plan and a general plan, that this committee is going to go forward and the city's going to go forward and we're going to have one new document. And we're also going to set it up for the future folks that come behind us to be able to make, easily make updates to the LCP general plan and any of the other documents on a more regular basis rather than waiting decades to do one major one because they haven't done anything for several years.
Thanks, Kathy. Christine Rogers.
I don't know, for some reason, integration comes to mind to me and it's multi-generational so that we have housing for all of our generations, so that we have linked our environment with our business community and our youth and workforce development and we've linked our arts with our economy. You know, it's really integration of our community, the walkability of it, just in an overall kind of a sense.
Thanks, Christine. Susan Schneider.
Well, I would like them to thank us for three things. One of them is preserving the, the cultural and, and the cultural and artistic character of the community while the community is growing, providing additional services and housing than that residents need, the current residents and the future residents, and also putting the, the city government and the, the business community on a firm financial foundation. So, I think those, those three areas.
Great, Susan, thank you. Glenn Silaway.
I'm going to go back to a different kind of vision. I mean, obviously, I would like for people then to look back and say, I like living here as much as they did. I had an interesting experience last night, I did a presentation for the Historical Society and I had a slide up that was from 1954, 64, when the plant was just being built, there was one- about their community and wanted to be part of it, wanted to stay, that we've had this record retention, and that people wanted to come and build things here and, you know, build, build our futures here. So it was more looking back and saying, thank you for showing us it could be different, that this sort of public discourse, this, this process, this important, central, community process, could be different and collaborative, and could really engage people and want them to be part of it, part of the future.
Thanks, Melanie. Susan Stewart.
This might be a little boring, Christine, nothing too flashy, but in 50 years, I think I would want people who are using this document to feel that it was clear and comprehensive, that it was still relevant and still viable. And certainly, I think along with that is what Kathy Novak was saying about the ease of making changes, because things do change and the needs change, so that's what I would say.
Thanks, thanks, Susan. Dr. Teft?
Well, I hope we won't have to worry about cars on Morro, Morro Bay Boulevard, because I hope they will have gone the way of the Selectric by 2064. If, if, if I could define what I'd like somebody to say to me from 50 years ago, I guess I would like them to say, thank you for helping to preserve the amazing natural beauty of this place. Thank you for providing a community that's on the right scale for its setting, and thank you for preserving a place where people still relate to each other with humanity and with kindness.
Thanks, Dr. Teft. Mr. Vosler.
It's kind of difficult to project into 2064, you know? It makes me, it makes me think 1915 compared to 1964, you know? Who would have guessed, you know, who would have thunk, you know? But I don't, I think there's a lot of things that won't be here. I think probably cars, you know, things like that. But I hope that what people will, in that time, will look back and thank us for is, is caring. And, and I hope they'll be able to look around at, at what they see here and go, this is really beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Vosler. Rich Bouquet.
My calculating brain quickly added up how old I would be. And then my never-can-pass-up-a-challenge's brain said, I could do that. So I would like to be top of the stairs up there on that bench, sitting out, looking over and having people come by and be able to tell them that we worked together and that they would thank us for creating a document that respected and honored the past heritage of, of Morro Bay, and that we developed a document that protected them, looking forward enough to protect them and their kids, and that we, like Kathy said and others, that we developed a document that had tools built in to make it flexible, but easy to fix and change as Morro Bay grows out of what we start with, but grow and continue to grow with the general plan as needed, so thank you.
Thanks, Rich. And that concludes all the questions, and what a great panel. This is, this is very, very exciting. Yeah, yeah, very. That was a great closing question, Christine. For everybody, it was more of a, you know, not a business-like question, but, you know, let's think about it. So it was great, and I appreciate that. Now it comes down to council filling out a box here, and it doesn't really reflect the vision which all of you came here to share with all of us, but unfortunately, there's only, we only agreed to nine spots, and certainly, I know everyone on council is very thankful for all of you to come out and apply for this and, and give us, you know, all these wonderful answers and thoughts and being so thoughtful. So I'll look over towards Dana. We basically just need to go ahead and fill out our, our nine spots, and then we'll hand it to you, and we'll go back and forth a little bit, and then we'll get through it. So everyone, thanks again, and we'll start with that and work down the list. Okay?
Can we have a little extra time? I mean, maybe these guys can, do you want them to stay in their seats, or can they break? Or, I just think I may need a little more time than we've had in the past.
That's a great suggestion, just to, just take a break and, you know, and then we'll go ahead and work through the list.
Yes, it's a suggestion.
Yeah, that'd be great, very thoughtful, Christine. Thank you.
They're just really close to me, that's why.
Think what your break would be like in 50 years.